All right. I think we're public. There's only a few people on the attendees, but I'm going to assume that's populating. So I'll call the order our regular board meeting of Tuesday, February 15th. Can we have a roll call, please?
Student trustee Dana?
Here.
Student trustee Lyra?
Here.
Trustee Boyd?
Here.
Trustee Davidson?
Here.
Trustee Dos?
Here.
Vice President Daron?
Here.
President Hinckley?
Here.
Superintendent Wells?
Here. Here.
Great. Thank you. And I will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance for those who want to join. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have our AUSD mission and vision statement read, please?
The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Our meeting norms is as follows. One, maintain a focus on what is best for students. Two, ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully. Three, endeavor to find common solutions to issues to collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs into what is best for students. And four, make a commitment to effective deliberation. Each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their own points of view, even if one disagrees.
Great. Thank you. There was no action taken in closed session tonight. We need a motion to approve our agenda.
I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
May I make a friendly amendment?
Absolutely. Go for it.
You might want to hear what it is first.
Oh, no, no. Yeah, no, I said, yeah, I haven't agreed to the amendment yet. I'm saying that please, please share it.
Appreciate it. I'm wondering if we can change our AUSD comprehensive school safety plans from a review and action to a review and discussion item?
I agree with that amendment.
I just, just my two cents, I was going to request that we pull it based on two issues that were raised before. Given staff time to address those issues and so that we can bring it back in its fullest form in the immediate future.
Trustee Davidson, what are your thoughts?
I can pull my amendment and agree to Superintendent Wells pulling it from the agenda.
We would need a board majority to agree to pull it, though.
That we would.
So we just move forward with trustee Dos's proposal for the agenda and we all vote no? Or shall we vote? Shall we make a new movement?
His motion is still on the floor, waiting for a second, if you don't want to second it.
Trustee Dos, you can amend your motion as well. Is that right, President Hinckley?
He could. He knows the rules as well as I do. I don't see, I don't see him moving.
I'm not moving because I.
I will wait for a second.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to amend, but if there's no second, somebody else can.
I will second.
So this is a roll call vote to approve the agenda with the amendment to change the safety plans to a review and discussion item?
No. No. To approve the agenda as is.
As is. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Student trustee Dana?
No.
Student trustee Lyra?
No.
Trustee Davidson, we start with you tonight.
No.
Trustee Dos?
Yes.
Vice President Daron?
Uh, no. Sorry.
President Hinckley?
Yes.
And trustee Boyd?
No.
All right, we need a new motion on our agenda. We still don't have an approved agenda.
I move that we approve our agenda without the review and action item being the AUSD comprehensive safety school safety, sorry, safety plans.
You want to remove it from the agenda?
You don't want a discussion? Well, if the superintendent feels that the staff needs more time and we're going to discuss it at that time, then I feel that our discussion tonight will not have enough content around the actual safety plans. So I would prefer to just wait, but that's just my motion.
I think the, the one reason to keep it on there is to give the public some insight into why we're having this conversation that we're having right now about why it's not prepared.
Because once we, once we remove it, we can't talk about it. And we also can't share any information as to why it's being removed, so on and so forth. Which is why I was hoping to allow it to remain. It doesn't prevent us from doing additional things or allowing staff to do additional things as well. If we're not ready to go on a leg or in the evening, you know, we can always, you know, move it at that time. But if we remove it now, then we can't talk about it.
Okay, then I'm going to re-motion. I, okay.
My two cents, because it's really important and I want to be as transparent as possible. What I don't want to happen after I was given full disclosure why I want to pull it. I didn't want staff to be grilled in open session of why this and why that and why that and why this, because that wouldn't be truthful or healthy. And I don't want staff to be subjected to that. Just full disclosure. That's my rationale. I wanted the whole board to hear that.
Thank you. Did you want to make a motion, trustee Davidson?
Um, yeah, I move that we approve the agenda and we remove the, well, we, sorry. I move that we approve the agenda with the AUSD comprehensive school safety plans as a review and discussion item only.
I second that.
Student trustee Dana?
Yes.
Student trustee Lyra?
Yes.
Trustee Dos?
No.
Vice President Daron?
Yes.
President Hinckley?
Yes.
Trustee Boyd?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
Yes.
All right, we have an agenda. The approval of the agenda with the revision of item 12, sorry, 13A, will move to a review and discussion item passes with all members voting in favor except for trustee Dos. I think I've got that right. All right, so we now move to our, what will be a much more fun event. Our spotlight for the evening, Albany High School Visual and Performing Arts.
I'm going to have executive director Richie do the honors. He had the good privilege of working with our band instructor and happened to see the amazing work and the many honors that was bestowed upon him. And I don't think I can give a proper introduction, so this is why I'm going to rely on our executive director, Alexia Ritchie, if you'd be so kind to do the honors.
Of course, Superintendent Wells. It is my great honor and privilege to introduce to you not only a fine human being, a devoted father and husband, but an award-winning band director from our own Albany High School, McGregor High School. Without further ado, I would like to introduce to you for our spotlight tonight, Albany High School's band director, as well as the Visual and Performing Arts department chairperson, Craig Bryant.
Thank you so much for having me and thank you for that nice introduction, Alexia. It's nice to be with you all. I've been teaching now, this is my 15th year teaching in Albany. And I teach, you know, the band and orchestra and jazz class school. I also teach the middle school orchestra program. And I love working here. And I'll tell you, this has been by far the hardest school year. And I know you've heard that from other teachers. I'm going to start with that because I don't want to just be all sunshine about things. I'll get to that in a moment. But I would just say I have a great appreciation for all my colleagues and for what all of you are doing to help things work out in education in Albany. It's tough right now and I feel everybody. So I wanted to share tonight, when I got asked to speak, thank you for recognizing my awards. I would just say this, I work with some amazing people. I work with outstanding students, wonderful colleagues, and a very supportive community. And that's allowed me to be recognized, which doesn't happen a lot for teachers. And I'm just super thankful and appreciative of all those people. And I thought tonight, when I speak to you, I want to share with you some of the great people that I work with and some of the things that are going on in, in our school year that are really positive. And I put together a little thing, just one moment. There you go. So I've been department chair kind of off and on. I did it for like seven or eight years and I needed a break, but I've been back for the last three or four years. And I want to highlight for you what I think is one of the most important thing about our visual and performing arts classes and what they're offering to our school community. And I will say, I think it's SEO at its finest. It's the OG SEO before that became a popular thing. And we are, we are working with students, we're giving them artistic expression, authentic communication, and outlets for students on a daily basis. And, you know, a large part of my class and all the performing arts is group work that has meaningful accountability to our stakeholders. So, you know, it could be a concert, it could just be making sure you can play your parts so everybody in your section's happy with you. And we are also providing perspective and balance inside the school day for students. It's a little bit of a different classroom when you come in. I know you, it's easy to kind of see that or you hear it when you're walking down the hall, but true, truly, it's high level learning and coaching of students. And I love that part about it. And when we focused on SEO this year and in the spring of last year, just getting to play music together, that, that just brings up so many of the pillars of what SEO stands for and what we can do in the classroom. And some of the obvious things that we're doing, you know, you see online or you hear about them. There are performances, our workshops, concerts, or dance shows, artist relations. These are performances for our community and we're working to bring in people, especially in the music program where I'm, I've had people from Stanford and Sonoma and Cal come in just this year, getting students exposed to high-level professors and musicians so that they can have a real well-rounded experience. It's good for them to hear from me. It's good for me to hear from somebody else and so forth. And one of the things that's coming back this year that I'm like super excited about, we've been kind of dodging a little bit was like competitions, exchanges, festivals, and things of that nature. We had two or three things canceled in January with the Omicron surge, where I didn't feel comfortable traveling with kids in early and mid-January. And, but those events are coming back. And in March, we, I call it March Madness, but we have, you know, each of my classes gets to go to a college campus and work with professors there. We have our CMEA, our Music Education Association festivals, and our spring concerts where we started having, just last week, we had our jazz concert where we had a really nice in-person crowd for the first time in a while. And lastly, I'll just say we're creating community. If you ever, the arts building, if you come before school, during lunch, break, or after school, Allison was just there. We just left the school about 6:15, 6:30 to make this meeting tonight. We're creating a place where students feel welcome and where they're seen and where they want to spend time, where they have a big part of their identity during the school day. And this is where I want to shout out some people. I work with amazing colleagues. I want to say a shout out to Kara Baker, our dance teacher. They had a really wonderful virtual dance show last month. If you didn't catch it, you can see it on her YouTube channel. That was publicized. And then her dance company went to their very first competition and they got fourth place, the ADC. And that was outstanding, especially coming back this school year. I have a really wonderful colleague in Kate Heisinga, our new choir teacher this year. She is amazing. And I'm also her BITSA or TIP mentor. And I'm so thankful to work with somebody that's as caring and put together. And she delivered some, I don't know, four or 500 Valentine's grams to the middle school and high school. And the kids did such a wonderful job, brought a lot of joy on campus this week. I just left the theater rehearsal with Ms. Fishberg and many others where we're working to Mount Beauty and the Beast, and I hope you'll join us in mid-March for that. My art colleagues, Elisa, Margaret, and Rachel, who are hands-on learning, you know, that is a big part of being in visual performing arts is doing and getting your hands in there. A lot of this is possible also because I have really great colleagues at the, at the elementary school and the middle school with Rich and Jeff and Marina, and I'm so thankful for their collaboration. We have an awesome administration and faculty that values art and the music students in our school and what those kids are bringing to their classrooms, even if it's not, not music, you know? And our school district and all that you folks are doing here, you recognize the importance of arts in our school day and you're making it accessible to all students, you know? I am, I have a daughter who will be a kindergartner next year in Albany schools. We're super excited. And so I, our community, you know, I specifically, we're funded by AMF, but you know, these wonderful other organizations, School Care, AEP, TSA, PFAB, they create space for everybody to be able to do everything. So I just want to say thank you to all of them and to all of my colleagues because it's a truly a collaborative effort. Specifically, AMF is celebrating 20 years of supporting music education in Albany schools. And it's an amazing group of parents. I know that the last two years, we've, we've been virtual in all of our Zoom meetings. And I know what a challenge that is for all of the community groups. And I'm just so proud of what AMF has done and thankful to the board, our president Barbara, for their perseverance and their support of Albany music all of these years, all the past presidents, some wonderful people. And if you want to see our website, you can check it out. And if you're watching at home, you want to donate, you can visit us at AlbanyMusic.org. And it has a link to a lot of other things you can check us out. Tonight, I also want to recognize some outstanding students. And the three pieces of work that you see here on your screen are from Elisa Cohen's art classes. Three of her students were selected for some scholastic art and writing awards. And you can just see Maggie and Vida and Mia. They're like moving on in this competition. They're just stunning. And I don't know if the screen share is really doing the justice, but I'm super proud of them and, and all that my colleagues are doing. And the my lead alto player, Elijah Silver in the jazz band, he was selected for the Allstate Jazz Band. There's just two alto saxophones from the entire state were selected for the high school and he's one of them. And he's such a wonderful young man to work with. And he sounds great. We had our concert last week, but it's going to air tomorrow night on the Albany Music Fund Facebook page. I'll share just like a moment of this because the band sounded good. This is a Duke Ellington piece called Jeep's Blues. And Eli did a wonderful job with it. All right, so I'll leave it with you there. And just to say, maybe you can see it in the video, just people listening to each other. People acknowledging one another and being, you know, creative together. That's a big part of what we do. I'm thankful for you and thanks for having me on tonight and thank you for your work.
Thank you so much. And thank you for giving us a little, we could have watched more of that video.
Tomorrow night on Facebook.
Yep. Thank you so much.
All right. Good night, folks.
Yep. We'll stay here. People may want to say something, so don't go anywhere yet. Board, any, yeah, Allison, student board member Dana.
Yeah, so I was a member of Mr. Bryant's orchestra for around, I think it was five years. And just from that experience, Mr. Bryant is really good at what he does, everybody. He's, he's an incredible musician and incredible band teacher. Just really anything that you could want in a music teacher, that's, that's kind of the embodiment of Mr. Bryant. Just, just to kind of give an example of that, he taught me how to play an instrument from scratch. Like I had no experience. I walked in the first day and I learned how to play an entire, an entire instrument in those five years. And I think that's, that's really important in a music program in general and an arts program. Just having the, the pure like beginner to advanced level of expertise and teaching. I remember the, the competitions and, and the different festivals were highlights. And as a student, you can tell that he like really cares about them and really cares about you as a student. And then I've also had the fortune of working under Ms. Baker, Ms. Heisinga, and Ms. Fishberg in the musical. And they're also really amazing arts directors and, and people in general. And so I, I'm just so grateful to have been a part of the arts programs in Albany. And I'd encourage, if you have students that are about to go into sixth grade, I'd encourage you to have them be involved in, in the arts and like the upper levels and also the, the lower levels. Although I haven't, I haven't quite experienced elementary school arts. But yeah, just in general, the arts program's really robust and I'm really grateful for all the experiences I've had with, within it.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd?
Yeah, I'll just quickly say thank you to Mr. Bryant for this presentation. I love jazz. So I really could have just watched that whole thing and I'm going to try to tune in tomorrow. I will not bore everyone saying what music means to me in my life personally, but I really can't imagine kind of getting through any piece of it without it and just having the opportunity for that, that self-expression and community and just giving students the ability to shine and thrive in a whole other way. I was a band kid. I was never great at the flute. I did better in other areas of the arts. I did my best. But I just really very much appreciate all that the arts programs bring into our students' lives and the whole community. And so thank you so much for your service and taking the time to share this with us tonight.
Trustee Dos?
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, take a moment to thank you, Mr. Bryant, for, you know, everything that you do, you know, in the classroom, for the students and outside as well, you know, always kind of thinking about the community. And, you know, putting people before yourself. And I think that that's, you know, you know, one of the things that makes, you know, our little community great is that people are always willing to kind of like go the extra mile so that, you know, good things, you know, happen. So just wanted to take a moment to thank you for that. I was in the jazz band myself in high school. So I firsthand know, you know, all the hard work that goes into, you know, preparing for performances and and then actually performing in front of people, not an easy thing. And so, you know, really great that, that, you know, you are putting that, you know, together. I'm excited to, you know, see, you know, the finished product and, you know, all the good things that will come in the future. So again, thank you for, you know, all your hard work and, and everything that you bring to the district.
Vice President Daron?
Um, I want to thank you, Mr. Bryant. You know, I'm not familiar, very familiar with the program. And it was just an outstanding presentation in terms of all that I learned tonight. And especially your shout out. It's, it was a beautiful way of informing and letting us know all the people in the district that give so much to this program. From, from the teachers, all the student activities that are going on, the Albany Music Fund. And also your comment, I really liked it about it's an artistic expression and authentic community opportunities for the kids. And that's what it's all about. And, and I would just like to thank you for, for your, your shining tonight as well.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming. And thank you also for reminding us that, you know, social emotional learning starts with enjoying doing things at school and developing all sides of yourselves. So it's, it's always nice to hear how our district is nurturing that part of students, which helps in every aspect of their education. So thank you so much. And folks, go to all those Facebook pages and check out the performances because they're super great.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night. All right. Our next, and we now have a recognition, we have two, two delightful items tonight. So our recognition for this coming month in March 2022 is to proclaim Women's Hurstery Month. And I believe Vice President Daron is going to help present this.
Okay, thank you. It is very delightful to begin this presentation. And what I would like to, to do is to ask everybody to, to support by reading a short paragraph. And if it's okay, I will call on everybody just after each person finishes their part, just so we'll know kind of the order in which people are going. And also, if it's okay, I would like to make it very personal by just calling you out with your first name. Okay, so I would appreciate that. So this is, and, and I'd like to thank Sarah Hinckley for working with me and, and providing this resolution for tonight. So this is resolution number 2021-22-16. And the purpose of this item is for the Board of Trustees to adopt this resolution, proclaiming March 2022 as Women's Hurst, Hurstory Month. So Sarah, would you please begin the, the first paragraph?
Yeah. Did you want us to read the background or do you want us to read the resolution?
We are reading the background first.
Okay. We, the board, through this resolution, call on all schools to commemorate the month of March 2022 as Women's Hurstery Month by incorporating instructional activities and the recognition of the contributions of women throughout history in the classroom.
Melissa?
This month-long celebration is an opportune time to acknowledge women's impact on history, culture, economics, and society. Women have been at the forefront of history-making movements in the United States in addition to addressing the challenges and struggles that everyday women confront and resolve.
Vani?
As we enter the third year of the pandemic, the National Hurstery Month theme is providing healing, promoting hope. It is both a tribute to the case, I'm sorry, ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers, including educators during this ongoing pandemic, and also a recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history.
Okay. And before we go to the actual resolution, I would like to ask Kim Trutain, and one of our staff persons and former board member. She took a lot of time to put together this little presentation for you. Kim, if you could take it over?
Thank you very much, Vice President Daron. So next month is going to be Women's History or Hurstory Month. Technical difficulties. There we go. Over 75% of the staff employed by A Over 75% of the staff employed by AUSD are women. And only a small fraction could be pictured here. But I want to emphasize that all are highly valued and appreciated. Oh, so what do women do in Albany Unified School District? Women enroll our students and ensure safety at school. Women staff our school offices. Women teach art and science and computer science. And coach PE. There we go. Okay. Women run our databases, hire staff, pay the bills, and maintain compliance to legal requirements. AUSD women are superheroes. Women provide expert leadership across the district. Women are principals of AUSD schools. And resource specialists, intervention teachers, and paraeducators. Women are serious advocates for Albany students. And AUSD women know how to keep it lighthearted. And with that small sampling of the women of AUSD, I will end. Honor AUSD women during Women's History or Her Story Month. We appreciate you every month and particularly honor you in March 2022. Thank you.
And thank you, Kim. That was beautiful. Thank you so very much for your time and energy at putting that together so quickly. Thank you. So now we'll turn to the resolution. And if we could please start with Istaka, if you would read the first whereas.
Sure. Whereas today we find ourselves in the third year of the COVID-19 pandemic with its continuing challenges and stresses and.
Allison.
Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have risen to this current crisis with their skills and knowledge, their personal strength, resolve and resilience, and continue to be essential workers in a multitude of ways. And.
Brian.
Whereas Albany Unified School District has a staff comprised overwhelmingly of women. And women constitute the majority of the district volunteers. And.
Julie.
Sorry, I had to get my microphone. Whereas we recognize the key role that teachers and support staff play in our children's lives on a daily basis. And.
Jackie. Sorry. Okay, whereas our Albany Children's Center teachers and staff were the first to open the classroom doors to our very youngest learners during the pandemic. And.
Alexia.
Whereas our principals, classroom teachers, counselors, district office staff, school office personnel, mental health professionals, food service staff and campus supervisors have continually risen to meet the challenging conditions of the COVID-19 pandemic. And.
And.
Whereas our nurses, health assistants, COVID-19 liaisons, student support services, district-wide committee members, including our health, public health professional committee, school volunteers, and parent-teacher associations have worked tirelessly to keep our children safe during this time. And.
Marina.
Whereas the work of women in and out of the home is still undervalued by our society and women suffer disproportionately from job loss during the pandemic and continue to be paid less than men for the same work. And.
Brian.
Whereas.
Brian Beeks, please, if he's available. No problem.
I am here. Thank you so much. Whereas women and girls throughout the pandemic have continued a long legacy of collaborating, mobilizing for equity and justice in their schools and communities.
Frank.
Therefore, be it resolved that the Albany Unified School District Board of Education proclaims the month of March 2022 as Women's History Month and encourages all district schools to observe this occasion with appropriate instructional activities.
Sarah.
Yet further resolved that we dedicate this month to all the women who work and volunteer in the district. And we take this opportunity to celebrate and express our gratitude to all of you.
That's right. We do take this opportunity. Okay, Sarah, back to you.
All right, so we, before we, before I forget to have us actually approve the resolution, I will take a motion on this resolution.
I move that we approve the resolution number 2021-22-16, proclaiming March 2022 as Women's Her Story Month.
I second.
Hey, student trustee Dana.
Yes.
Student trustee Lira.
Yes.
Vice President Duran. Vice President Duran. Sorry, you're muted.
Oh, again, I'm so excited. Yes.
Thank you. President Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Trustee Davidson.
Yeah.
And trustee Dos.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. The resolution 2021-22-16 passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Vice President Duran and, and Kim Trutain for putting all of that together. And we look forward to honoring and being honored in the coming months. I will, I believe that until 2018, there had only ever been one woman sitting on the board at a time. And after that, we had a majority for the first time. And now we have four women board members, which is the same as, I, I think, very few other districts in the state. So another thing to be proud of and celebrate. All right. I'm sorry, I need my reading glasses. I don't know when senior citizen might this. All right, our next item is approval of the consent calendar. Can we get a motion on the consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
A second.
Student trustee Dana.
Yes.
Student trustee Lira.
Yes.
President Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Trustee Davidson.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Yes, yes. I need to ask enough.
Vice President Duran.
Yes.
Thank. Great. The consent calendar passes unanimously with one extra vote for support. And we move to superintendent and board members' reports, starting with you, Dr. Wells.
Yes, I just wanted to share our band teacher sentiment that this has been a very incredibly difficult year, very hard. Challenging would be a gross understatement to every staff, including our teachers, our classified district office. It has been really taxing. And I just want to let folks know, at the end of the week, staff will be taking a much deserved and much needed break. We call it winter break and I'm encouraging and requesting it all staff that they don't do any work and don't answer any emails. And I encourage the parents and families to table all emails over breaks until we return because staff deserve a break and they need a break so that we can make it strong to the end of the year. Because this year will go down in history like no others. Folks are just really running on fumes. And so I appreciate something that I would never forget that came from one of our board members. And that is trustee Melissa Boyd, and that is graced. And it's important to have grace, especially during these times and to work as a team during difficult times and to really be able to lean on others when you are struggling. Mental health is not unique and limited to our children and they are going through a lot. But staff also, also go through a lot. And I share that with the community and parents and staff and, and board just as a reminder that these are difficult times and for all of us to take heed to. And I, and I come up with it, but trustee Boyd's position on grace, I really appreciate it. And when, when we're dealing with difficult issues and people need a shoulder to lean on, I'm reminded of that phrase that could never leave my head and much appreciated. So that concludes my report for this evening. Madam Chair, President Hinckley.
Great, thank you. I, we need a, a banner when we get back to City Hall that has that word behind us. And I just wanted to mention a couple of, of committee meetings that happened last week. It feels like this has been the last 10 days of committee meetings. But one was that our budget advisory committee meeting finally got to meet in person for the first time, I guess, in almost two years. And that process has been just incredibly fruitful. Jackie Kim, our CBO, has been doing an amazing job helping us work with a consultant to really dig into our budget and figure out how to use these very committed community members, including our staff and, and parents and other folks to try to understand what areas of our budget we might want to look at more closely. But I just wanted to say it is so amazing to do that work in person instead of on Zoom. So I'm really looking forward to being able to do more of our committee meetings that way. But I also just wanted to let the board know trustee Dos was there as well, but that, that budget advisory committee process has been going really well and that there will be a lot of, I think, really productive conversations about the budget over the next few months coming forward. And the other committee that I think is getting closer to bringing something to the board is the Instructional Improvement Committee at the high school, which spent a lot of time last week talking about the proposal for ethnic studies as a requirement at the high school. And I know the students have been getting some surveys about this and there's a lot more dialogue that still needs to happen. But that was also a really interesting meeting and just an amazing, amazing assortment of staff and families and students that are helping to guide that process and put forth what they think is the best option for the, for the board to consider later this year. So with that, I will pass it on to Vice President Duran.
Just one item, which is our, I wanted to sort of repeat from our last meeting. The Policy Committee is going to be hopefully meeting one of these days soon in person. And one thing that I did not stress at the last meeting was that we are dealing right now, we, we are addressing the equity, the development of an equity policy. And because of that, I wanted to let the board know that one of the things we discussed was because this is such a key policy, we wanted to get it out to everybody, different committees to look at it even before it comes to the board. So because we had that conversation at our last meeting, I wanted to be sure that the board knew about it and that if you had any reflections about our meeting with different committees that are, you know, exist in the district and get their feedback and their input into this policy. If, if any board member has any other suggestions, they can please send emails to, to Dr. Chin because she is the one that runs our meeting. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Trustee Dos.
Oh, thank you. I have a few things I wanted to go over. But I need to call back my, my helper for my board report. One moment, please. Okay, she's, she's on her way. While, while we're waiting, while we're waiting on her, the budget advisory. Okay, she's here. All right. Okay. All right, Allison, we're gonna be, we're gonna be reading this, okay? Right here, ready? Go ahead. Right here.
Seventh Annual Black History Month Program.
Program, yep.
Enjoy. Student.
Performances.
Performances, food and music.
And when is it?
Wednesday, February 16th.
And what time?
2022, 15.
It's five o'clock to 6:30.
6:30.
At the.
PM.
At the.
Albany Middle School.
Courtyard.
Courtyard.
All right. Yep, thanks. All right. So thanks, Allison. The Seventh Annual Black History Month Program is tomorrow, February 16th, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM at the Albany Middle School Courtyard. All AUSD protocols will be followed, so make sure that you wear your mask so that we can celebrate, but celebrate safely. So thank you very much and I hope to see all of you there. The budget advisory meeting, I felt was very productive. I'm glad we got to meet in person. So that was exciting. I also had an opportunity to meet with some representatives from Cal Berkeley this past week. And just got an opportunity to hear about a lot of programs that they have in place. And then also just, we also had an opportunity to discuss other, you know, potential programs that might be in the works, but the details are still being worked out. But I thought it was important to just mention that, that, that meeting happened, that those meetings are happening. And after the break, I think I wanted to, you know, kind of, kind of open up an opportunity for the community to schedule time to talk with your board. So I encourage, encourage you to reach out and either schedule some time to have coffee with the board member, you know, and invite them to coffee, you know, you know, in the area to kind of, you know, have discussions about things that you might be thinking about. So reach out and, and schedule that, you know, after, after the break. I think that it can be fruitful and a good opportunity to kind of talk about, you know, different things and, and ask questions. And sometimes there's not enough time at the board meeting to kind of share your thoughts in detail and the things that you're thinking about. So it's a great opportunity to be able to do that. And the more coffee you drink, the more you can talk, right? So, you know, take, take that opportunity and, and kind of, you know, share your thoughts and get to know your, your board. And that concludes my board report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd.
Thank you. Trustee Dos and junior trustee Dos took most of what I wanted to say for my report. So I will just add that there's going to be food and music at tomorrow evening's Black History Month celebration in case that. in case that encourages additional folks to make the check over. It should be fun and an opportunity for us to actually see each other in sort of real three dimensional life in a safe way, outdoors. And I'll just say, I wish everyone, all of our members of our district a wonderful break. I hope it is rejuvenating and restful and fun and joyful. It's well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Davidson.
I don't know how I can follow that, except that I want to end all my board member reports with nailed it, because that would just be so epic and amazing. Just really quickly, the Environmental Action Planning Committee met and we had a really wonderful discussion. There are projects that seem to be moving along and areas that were really looked at and addressed. And I really wanted to just share something that has resonated with me that Kim Trutaine brought up. And it was that we have these bonds in our district and the amazing amount that this district has accomplished when I was reviewing the facilities master plan with making that money work for creating facilities for our students. And when I kind of reviewed the, the list from 2013 and then what had been done and what was in progress, I really thought, wow, this is, this is a district that set something in motion and followed through. And I just thought that some kudos were, were due on that. And I look forward to us being creative and figuring out how we're gonna do that for the rest of our facilities so that all of our students are in their 21st century learning environments. But I really appreciate what's been done so far.
Thank you, student board members.
Yeah, I'll start right out with saying that Valentine's Grams at H S and A M S were a success. And they were really lovely. We had students come into each of our classes and sing for us. And it was a really great way to just spread the joy and love on Valentine's Day yesterday. And I know that 10th grade counselor conferences are coming up. And those were really useful for me last year, just to kind of get my future in order. And so I'd encourage everyone who that might be relevant to, to just think about that and get involved. And the Spring Musical is coming up at the high school, so be on the lookout for tickets. Performances will be happening from the ninth to the 12th, if I'm not mistaken. And that, we've been working really hard on it. And yeah, just, I'd be really happy if you decided to come. And then course selection is coming soon, sometime in early March, as per Mr. McNally. But that's also something to be on the lookout for, and I'll hand it over to Hichaka.
Yeah, we have, I think, yeah, I think trustee, I mean, President Hinckley brought this up earlier. The ethnic studies discussion, there was a town hall that was held last Wednesday at the high school to talk about the upcoming ethnic studies requirement. And it's like possible formats for next year that were drafted by the Ethnic Studies Task Force under the I I C. And I know we'll be getting like a finished proposal to us sometime soon to like vote on. And then Challenge Day is also happening a week after break, so during March 1st, 2nd, and 3rd for sophomores and any juniors who may be interested. Challenge Day, if you haven't heard, is like this sort of event that happens at the high school for every sophomore class. A company that like coordinates these events called Challenge Day. And the main purpose is to just get students to be vulnerable about their emotions with each other in a very like healing and holistic way. I really enjoyed mine when it was in person. And so I really encourage any sophomores that are interested to check it out if they feel that it's something that they are comfortable with pursuing. And then at the middle school, once again, yeah, Allison brought this up, but the Valentine's Grams went well. And progress reports are also coming out for quarter three. Or the third trimester will start soon as well. And Black History Month Program was also brought up tonight. But yes, it occurs on the 16th at A M S from five to six thirty P M.
That's tomorrow.
Great, thank you. And if board members, I know you were reached out to about participating in Challenge Day. It is really an amazing experience. And anybody else who's watching the meeting who thinks that they would be a good adult participant in Challenge Day, you can reach out to the high school principal. I have a 10th grader, so I cannot participate this year. But it really is an amazing insight into our students and our staff and the ability to create that environment of vulnerability. Great way to get to know, get to know our students. So with that, we move to our public comment on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. And I'm talking slowly to give folks a chance to raise their hands. I don't see any. Okay. So we will move on to our first review and discussion item for tonight, which is the Albany Middle School Behavior Matrix. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Hinckley. Tonight, we have our Albany Middle School Behavior Matrix, Matrix, presented as a review and discussion facilitated by our own Principal of the Year, by the Association of California School Administrators, the best of the best. Some of you guys know her as Principal Brill. Some of us call her D B, but and others just call her Miss Amazing. But for the formal record, we're gonna call him Principal Brill. With no further ado, we introduce to you Principal Brill. Here's your handoff.
Thank you so much. And also, I just want to ask if we can have Catherine Floresca promoted to be a panelist, because she's going to be co-presenting with me tonight, since we work together on this, this really important project. So, but I'm the first few slides, so while she's being promoted, I'm going to go ahead and just jump in. And just want to thank you Superintendent Wells and board members for having us here tonight. We've been excited to bring this to the board. And this is a really perfect time. We've had enough time to really feel totally prepared for this. And so what we're here tonight to do is to present to you our updated and revised School Behavior Matrix. I can talk a little bit about the intention, the process, what our data shows so far. And then after that, we'll kind of get into the actual matrix itself. So I'm going to go ahead and jump in and ask if we can, yeah, go to the next slide. That's perfect. Thank you. So first of all, the question of why we're making this shift. And this has been part of a longer project that we've had at the middle school, where we initially went through a restorative justice committee that involved a number of different parents. We made sure to include parents that were in communities that were disproportionately targeted with, with the disciplinary practices in the, in the United States public school systems. And we had students on the committee, teachers, and that set all of this in motion. But it's, it's a long process to make a shift to a school behavior matrix. Because in order to make this shift, you can't just shift how you do discipline. You have to shift how you do school practices, and it starts in the classroom. We have, you know, had a lot of P D with teachers. Teachers have done a lot of work around creating community and relationships in their classrooms using restorative questions, really developing a lot of strategies that can be put in place that can be done before a student ends up in the office. But our main goal with making this shift is to, is that our, that discipline should be in place to shift behavior, not to throw a punishment at a student. And it's a real shift from the way that discipline has been looked at in the past and in traditional, in the tradition of U.S. schools. But we really try to frame it as thinking about, you know, we're educators. That's what our job is. We're educators, where, you know, we're not jury, we're not judge, we're not, we don't want to be part of a judicial system. We want to be in education. And so our job is to ask, help to educate and help students to grow in all aspects, not just academics, but also with their behavior. Oftentimes, the, you know, kind of traditional disciplinary practices remove students from their learning environment. And we feel like we can be really effectively addressing most forms of behavior without separating a child from their ability to learn academically, which then just further disengages that student. We are really working intentionally to disrupt the patterns in U.S. schools of disproportionality of discipline along race lines. And there is really clear research that suspensions in particular do not shift behavior, but instead put students on a path of disengagement from schools. And so we've been working really hard to look at, at what are other practices? What are different things that we can do? And this isn't, you know, sometimes people look at, well, if you're not going to suspend, oh, you're just going easy. You're just allowing things, and that is not the case at all. In fact, we feel like we have greater accountability to our students when we're able to keep them at school and work with them in that environment. Research also shows the districts that embrace restorative practices, there's a strong correlation, not only with reduction of suspensions, but also an increase in academic success as measured by graduation rates. You can find other types of statistics like that in lots and lots of different articles. This particular one came from the Little Book of Race and Restorative Justice by Benia Davis. And so those are some of the reasons that we had kind of set ourselves on this path. And if we could go to the next slide, please. The escalation of disengagement is something that's, again, talked about a lot within the context of, of impact of discipline in the, in the traditional sense. And basically, what it looks at is there's two ways that escalation happens. Either there's like this propulsion up along the school to prison pipeline that as students are pushed out of the learning environment. It's everything from being separated within the classroom to being sent out of the classroom, to the office referral, to the in-school suspension, suspension, and that sort of thing. And it doesn't mean that they have to get expelled to be on that, on that trajectory, that all of these different pieces are risk factors anytime a student is separated. And then the other way that it can go is moving in the direction where students, even just within the classroom, are separated, anxiety, depression, kind of where it turns inward instead of outward and disengagement from an opportunity to learn, which is also harmful to the success of our students that we're all really invested in. And so for us, what we're looking at is how do we go ahead and address student behavior? That it's important that students that there's, we're part of a community and we have certain norms and guidelines that are really important for students to follow. And so how do we hold them accountable to those without putting them on this trajectory? Let me go to the next slide, please. So this new matrix is in line with our growth mindset in our approach to academics. So in academics, if a student doesn't get something the first time, we don't punish them for it. We reteach it to them. Let's give them an opportunity to learn. You didn't understand that? Here's another way to look at it. Let's work one-on-one. Let's go to a group. Here's another way I can explain it to you. We give students multiple chances to learn academics, and that's important with behavior as well. And so what we are intending to do is to take educating students about their behavior as seriously as we do academics. And it's all through our schools, teaching academic behaviors in the beginning of the year. What does it mean to be safe, respectful, responsible, and an ally at our schools? When a student is have, it has done something that causes a disciplinary kind of response, what does that mean for us? How do we instruct them on the, on what happened to make sure they understand kind of the context of their behavior? How do we help to teach them some other behaviors if maybe their behavior is in place to get attention? Or whatever it is, how can we help them to learn some other behaviors, giving them multiple opportunities? And how can we help them to learn how to make something right? And give them that opportunity to right their wrong and stay engaged as part of their community? And that work is hard work. Going home on a suspension, depending on what the home situation is and kind of what, what happens, might feel really hard. But it's them being at home for a day. When we're holding them accountable and we'll go through the different pieces of what we, what our alternates are, it's hard work. It's hard work for students to learn about their behavior and figure out, you know, to learn what, what they could have done differently. It's hard work to look somebody in the eye and make something right with them if that's an appropriate response. And so we have a lot of different pieces that we work with students on and a lot of different ways that we can respond based on, on the situation. Our new matrix maintains access to classes for the students involved. That does not mean that we never suspend. There are still times that we suspend, and we'll get to that in the matrix. But more often now, we are looking for how do we keep students involved in classes while still holding them accountable for their behaviors? And like I was saying before, it's providing multiple responses to help a child to learn from poor behavioral choices and opportunity to make things right within our school community. And just the idea that a student who has made a poor behavioral choice needs more learning, not less learning. We can go to the next slide, please. And I can't see on my screen right at this moment, but if Ms. Floresca is on, she's going to take over talking about the next couple of slides.
I think she's not on. I think somebody, one of the staff has been trying to okay, reach out, but.
Okay. Oh, maybe.
We, part of the issue is.
A lot earlier than we had expected. So let me just text her real quick. She might, she might not have realized, because it was on the agenda for later, so.
Okay, who, who would imagine that we would be.
You were ahead of schedule. Thank you for that. So, okay, well, I just texted her and hopefully she gets that. And Julie, I'm thinking you can look out for her and hopefully she can join in. Okay, so while we are waiting for her to join, I will just continue and start by sharing some of the differences. And if she joins in and I don't notice, if someone could flag me, I'd appreciate that. So.
Principal Brill, while we're waiting, on that last bullet, can you kind of explain and give more examples? I think this would be helpful. If you could kind of expand on that, that might buy us a minute or two, but I think it would be informative.
I'm sorry, that which part are you, are you asking for me to expand on? From the last, from the last slide that we were just on?
Yes, the last bullet.
Okay. Should we go back to the last slide then? This one right here. Okay, hold on a second. There we go. Thank you. Sorry, I have a different view. Just one moment. Sorry, I'm just letting her know. I apologize for that, but I just wanted to make sure, and she is joining us right now. She didn't realize that it started early. So, yeah, so in terms of the last point about the multiple responses, what we're looking to do is we have within our matrix, a number of different pieces we can choose from. So I'm going to give an example. You know, let's say that somebody says something harm, a child says something harmful to another child. What we want to do is a few things. One, we want there to be accountability. So there needs to be some sort of, you know, piece where there, like, for example, one of the pieces we'll talk about is, you know, they're missing their lunches, they're missing passengers, missing the social part of the school day. We want to have that feeling of accountability that there was, there was a harm done. We want to make sure they understand, let's say they used a word that wasn't appropriate. What does that word mean? Do they really know and understand? We're going to give them that opportunity to learn what that means. We're going to make sure that if there was a reason, maybe the student said something to them they didn't like. What are ways that you can handle that? Have them role play, practice. What are some different things that you can do if someone does something that upsets you? And so we, we run them through, and then, of course, there's parental involvement and all those pieces that we've always done in the past. But as opposed to just saying like, okay, you did this thing that wasn't okay, you have detention. Instead, it gives us a chance to, you know, where the kid's sitting in detention, they haven't reflected. They're sitting there, they don't, maybe, you know, they're thinking about what is. Instead, we're walking them through and going through a process with them. And then if they're, if it's, if it feels right and that, and there's a lot of factors we use, can they talk with the other student and have a chance to really understand how the other student feels? And to, to like make things right with them. And we only do that if the other student is open to it and if that, if the student themselves is actually owning and taking responsibility. But those are just like a number of different things that we might do in one behavioral situation. So, and I see that Ms. Floresca is here.
She's here.
It's wonderful. So I'm going to go ahead and turn the next slide over to her.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Principal Brill. So just to point out some of the, the real highlighted differences in our new matrix, really looking at the language and the practice of our new matrix, it focuses on inclusion, the idea of keeping kids in class and in school to the extent that is safe. We'll, I'll talk a little bit more about the Integrated School Day versus suspension and the Extended School Day versus detention. The new matrix also focuses on education, adult connection and reflection that are integral pieces in students' reintegration into, into school after an event. And lastly, I do want to point out that even throughout the new matrix, suspension is still used when mandated by ed code and after we've exhausted a variety of ways to address student behavior. Next slide, please. So, an integrated school day, when looking at this, when trying to figure out the, the new matrix and, and what we could really focus on in terms of how to restructure a student's school day, we came up with three pieces. The Integrated School Day. The Integrated School Day is when a student will start school 15 minutes prior to the school day, meeting with an administrator, really mapping out what their day will look like. And then it ends up to 45 minutes after the end of the regular. And then it ends up to 45 minutes after the end of the regular school day. Again, meeting with an administrator. And throughout the day, the students will be meeting with school personnel during lunch, passing periods, breaks. And ideally will not miss any of their classes, except for what is needed to receive additional education, extra counseling, or take advantage of restorative opportunities. With the extended school day, extended school days are when students will spend up to 30 minutes either following the school day or during lunch to receive additional education or restorative opportunities. Again, still extending the learning. And then the modified extended school day is when, just like the extended school day, students will be receiving education or reflective opportunities during lunch or after school for up to 30 minutes, and then possibly during a class period where they will again receive additional counseling, education, restorative opportunities, or they'll miss a class if the student really isn't ready to go back into that particular class setting. And again, with these restructured school days, again, the idea is that it is still a school day. Next slide, please. And so suspension versus an integrated school day. When we look at suspension, students are absolutely removed 100% from the learning environment. They're at home by themselves. Whereas with an integrated school day, students still remain at school. When students are on suspension, they do not have direct or immediate access to teachers, support providers, or direct instruction. During an integrated school day, students have access to multiple support providers, teachers, direct instruction, counselors, administrators, parent educators. On a suspension, students are oftentimes have only one or two or a couple of opportunities to reflect and reintegrate into the regular school setting, whether it's they're on their way out of school or coming back into school after the suspension. During integrated school day, students have multiple opportunities to reflect, to demonstrate their learning, to check in with adults during administrative check-ins, counselor check-ins, lunchtime assignments, and after-school assignments, and restorative opportunities. Next slide, please. And so detention versus the extended school day. Looking at detention and thinking about what it means to be detained. We're keeping someone from proceeding. We're holding them back. Whereas in an extended school day, we are doing just that. We are extending the learning. We are using that forward momentum to continue the learning at school with adults. When students have detention, or the typical detention, there's a focus on time. You have 20 minutes and students are there in the office or in a classroom just waiting for that time to tick away so that they can go. During an extended school day, the focus is not necessarily on time, but specifically on learning. So there is, after completing this assignment, let's go ahead and check in. And it's only when the check-in has been completed or the assignment has been checked and and it's clear where the learning is, that the extended school day ends and that administrative check-in ends. Okay, next slide.
Principal Brill? Yes, so we wanted to show just some data from this year. So we compared it to 2019, 20, since last year, they're mostly at home. And so, and the timeframe for 2019, 20 was not the year in its entirety. It was the same amount of the year that we've had so far this year. So we're comparing the same length of time. And what we had in 2019, 20 was 37 suspensions up till this time of the year, which was 21 students. And so just to explain, that's 21 students, maybe one student has four suspensions, which why is the first number is larger. This year, so far, we've had seven suspensions with six of our students. And then you can, I'm going to just not read out all the different numbers, but give you a moment to just look over. You can see the, it broken down by race. And so what I would say as you're looking through that is, you know, again, going back to our initial intent to really disrupt the pattern of disproportionality around discipline, one, and two, to really take ourselves seriously as educators that we're trying to also disrupt a form of discipline that we've done because it's always been done. But the research shows is not effective to shift to something that is effective. And we'll go ahead to the next slide. This is our final piece of information we're going to share, and then we can answer questions that people have. Like I had said before, we're sharing really the focus on the behavior matrix, but there are so many other layers that we didn't order for this to be successful. You know, working with our teachers, working with classrooms, working with school climate pieces. This is another layer that we added this year. It's called Peer Circle Up. And it's a peer restorative justice program. It's in its first year. And we have 32 seventh and eighth graders, and we trained them in a two-day training, two half-days on how to lead tier one, which in the language of restorative practices, tier one is community building. So we trained them on how to lead community building circles. What are the different components? How do you build a circle? How do you facilitate that circle? How do you use a talking stick? All of those pieces. It's a really, really wonderful, wonderful group of students who have really risen to the challenge and are doing an incredible job. And they've been going into advisory classes monthly to lead circles. They go in in pairs and lead community building circles, and we have been popping into all their rooms and watching them, and they're really just doing a wonderful job. I think it also, we have teachers with a wide range of comfort around leading circles. So it's also nice modeling for those teachers who have not led circles in their classroom or are not comfortable with that, and also for those who are to really be able to work with those with those students and to support them. And so in coming up in March, we're going to be taking a subgroup of them and we'll be training them on how to lead tier-two circles, which are harm circles. We're not involving them on any disciplinary issues. But we are going to be working with them so that they can help peers to resolve conflicts when those peers feel open to their involvement in it. There's, I've done a lot of work in observing in other schools that have this program in place, and I think there's a lot of power in both teaching our students to have those skills on how to resolve conflicts and how to approach that, and for them to be able to really trust and support one another. And I think, you know, just been really impressed by what students are really capable of when you give them that opportunity. And so, you know, what we're looking to do is to give them an opportunity to be setting a tone at the school to be leaders and resolving conflicts and to be leaders in supporting one another. And so this has just been a really great layer that we are adding on into our school community. And I think the last slide that we have is just a wrap-up thank you. So thank you for hearing us. This is something we've been working on for a very long time, and this is kind of the culmination of that. Not that there's not more work to do, because of course there always is, but we feel like we're really in a good place with it and are really proud of the work that's been done and the involvement from our teaching staff has been phenomenal. Like I said earlier on, when we had a restorative committee that set us on this path, we had some wonderful involvement from parents and students. And so just happy to be at this point where we are and really implementing this new matrix and, you know, working, working through it as we go. So with that, just want to open up if anyone has any questions for us.
Great, thank you. And we also did get in the agenda, the matrix itself. So if board members have questions about that document as well. Please raise your hand if you have questions. Yeah, Vice President Duran.
One comment and one question. The comment is, it is very obvious that you and your staff have put in so much work into this, such a thoughtful document. Such a beautiful approach, you know, to, to the way, not only do we look at students, but how to wrap it around them, focus, they are the central focus, and they participate too in their behavior, right? And decisions that are made around that and how they can be supportive of each other. That's just so impactful. I mean, and it's, it's what you presented tonight. So I just like to congratulate you on such a very thoughtful document. And it's going to change, you know, how the kids are in the future, right? In terms of accepting responsibility for themselves and that accountability. The one question I have has to do with, as you're working to develop students as leaders in resolution of issues that they face all the time. Could you just talk a little bit about how you bring in the diversity of the kids in terms of their ethnicity? And so that all kids feel supported and know there are kids that understand them because of their cultures and languages?
Thank you. Yeah. And you're asking specifically about our peer restorative justice program that we're working with, is that correct?
That specifically and maybe in general going forward.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's important. I mean, I think in the same way that we have been working really hard to, you know, diversify our staff when we've had hiring opportunities. It's important for kids to see themselves reflected in the staff around them and also in the people supporting them. And so, you know, when we were putting our peer restorative justice program together, it was one of the things that we worked really hard to do was to make sure that we had representation different ethnicities, different gender identities, you know, just as much diversity as we're able to bring into it. We have seventh and eighth graders with the idea that the eighth graders will, you know, obviously promote this year, and seventh graders move up to be eighth graders, and then we'll we'll be able to round out who are the remaining seventh graders, what, you know, kind of representations of different students. And then, of course, you know, just which students do we feel like are able to hold that space and hold that confidentiality and have presence with leading a circle, you know, those pieces as well. But I think that to your question, we haven't yet started the tier-two circles with them. But when we do, I think it's going to be important, depending on the identity of the students in conflict, the nature of the conflict, to make sure that we bring in students that, that other, that the students in conflict will feel supported by, I mean, feel like will understand. And so I think that that question is an important question. We haven't faced it yet because we are just starting the recruitment for the tier-two peer educators, but that's something we will definitely keep in mind. Thank you.
I, go ahead, Trustee Dos.
You can go ahead.
All right. I have one just procedural question about whether the disciplinary matrix, because I know before I was on the board, there was a conversation about the high school one. Is this something that the board periodically has to approve, or is this something that each school site kind of develops and modifies? I know this is a review and discussion item, and I know you've sort of been using this matrix for a while, but I'm just curious what the, and this may be a question for Superintendent Wells, too, just what's the process for these being, are they documents that need to be approved by the board and turned into policy, or how does that work?
Well, it gets into the big why initially. And as Principal Brill looked at the data, she was deeply concerned about the disproportionality. And then as she brings it forward for review and discussion, there may be seen as some conflict with our current approved matrix that doesn't allow all of this flexibility. And so she's bringing it forward in hopes that this will replace the board-approved matrix that you approved years ago for the middle school and instead have this matrix that we find to be more of a social justice matrix and more effective. And at middle school, give kids an ample opportunity to learn and grow from their errors that they make at school. It doesn't replace and cannot replace the, what we call the big five, where we have mandatories. But it does address those all non-mandatories by keeping kids in school opposed to pushing them out, because research shows us when we have a push-out program, which is typical at most schools, we're really helping to increase the high school dropout rate, the pipeline of prison, and we want to disrupt that and have just the opposite for all kids, especially those kids who are historically disenfranchised. And as you can see with the preliminary data, this is really promising.
Okay, so just so, just so I understand, you do need the board to approve this, not tonight, but at a future meeting?
Yes, that's the short answer.
Okay.
And I think for us, our goal was to pilot it first so that we could work out the kinks and actually bring something to the board that is ready for approval, as opposed to us trying it out, and then you approve it, and then we have to come back. So we feel like, you know, we've been communicating with Dr. Wells along the way and felt like this was a good time because we feel really ready to bring this to you all for approval.
Okay, great.
May I add this? This is also addressing our second goal, because my goals are also the school site goals. And as they play with being creative and innovative with the whole child goal number two, this was one of the areas at the middle school where we can really do something different. And it's not separate, but it's all connected with the S3 and those kind of services and support that we provide for all kids. And this is really just an example of why Principal Brill, who's very humble, is the best and the best in what she does in the state of California. And so I'm glad the board got a snippet of that tonight.
Thank you. And just also want to shout out Ms. Floresca, who's been an amazing teammate on this project, so.
Yes, thank you. And apologies, well, I don't know if I want to apologize for us running ahead, but I apologize for us starting this before you were quite ready. So I just have another process follow-up question or comment. One is that when this comes to us as review and action next time, I think it would be important for the board to see what the previous board-approved matrix is, just so that we can compare those two things. And then also, I would be interested in just hearing what the plan is for sort of having some coordination between our elementary, middle, and high school approaches so that we're providing some consistency for the students and maybe sites learning from each other. And perhaps that's already ongoing, but I think that would be helpful to hear as well when this comes back for a vote. Trustee Dos.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. Because the, because the numbers show to affect certain students more than others, you know, when thinking about making changes and adjustments and things like that, what was kind of the, who was consulted? You know, kind of when making those changes and kind of what was the thought process that went into that?
Sure. Yeah, thank you for that question. When we had our restorative justice committee, that's what set us on this multi-year path in this direction. We had, we looked at what our disproportionality was at our particular school, which pretty much mirrored, you know, the national statistics. So we made sure that there were parents and students involved in that committee, African-American families, Latinx families, the two or more races, the groups that tended to be disproportionately disciplined and suspended on that path. So that was a big, a big part of that. And additionally, we, like, for example, The Little Book of Race and Restorative Justice, we had my whole, we bought that for our whole staff this year. So we're also drawing on a lot of research and really looking at, you know, the researchers and statistics that are coming from people of color as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And a follow-up question. As we kind of look throughout the district, and then take a moment to specifically take a look at the middle school and the staff there, you have a pretty diverse staff at the middle school. Do you think that this contributes to the changes that you've seen? You know, at the middle school and if you, I know it's kind of putting you on the spot, but if you wouldn't mind maybe elaborating on that a little bit, I think it'd be helpful for everybody here.
Sure. I mean, I think a couple of things. First of all, you know, our staff definitely has gotten a lot more diverse in the last decade. We still have a ways to go or nowhere near where we need to be. So I will say that. You know, I think that a lot of this work and a lot of the work that's district-wide goals, you know, in terms of culturally responsive teaching and practices and, you know, some of those other pieces where there's crossover with restorative practices, it's, you know, we're talking about the social emotional wellbeing of our students, which you can't separate out from identity. I think when we're having discussions, the more identities we have represented on our staff, when we're having, when we're doing our book study with a race and restorative justice, when we're talking about culturally responsive practices, the more experiences that people can hear from one another. We have a teacher at our school, Camille Fisher, who led, worked with me with a training that the district had sent us to a number of years ago to talk about intersectional communication, where it's a lot of teachers looking at their own. to um, talk about intersectional communication, where it's a lot of teachers looking at their own experiences and what they bring to the table with their students and sharing stories and, you know, providing windows and mirrors into each other's experiences. And so all of that is enriched by us having as much diversity in all the different ways we can possibly have. So I think that that, I, I think that we just benefit, we all benefit from, from, from that, you know? And, and the research for students, um, not just students of color, but all students from having teachers of color is really clear that it benefits, benefits everyone in a lot of different ways. And so I think, you know, like I said, I think we've made a lot of strides in the last decade at our school and we still have a ways to go before we can feel like, you know, we're where we need to be.
Um, those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? I don't see any public comment on this. All right. So we look forward to seeing you again in the near future um, so that we can uh, entertain this as a review and action item. And thank you again for all your work, putting this together and presenting it to us. It's really great.
Thank you. And thank you for, for hearing us. Appreciate you all. Thank you.
All right. We now move to our second review and discussion item for tonight. On AUSD COVID-19 outdoor masking requirements and possible processes for changing site protocols.
Before I turn it over to our, our lead person, you guys all know her so well, who's been leading up the um, COVID safety protocol and keeping all our kids and staff um, as safe as possible. Um, tonight discussion around masks. Um, I, I just want to say it was just yesterday when we were triaging and in a nine-one-one when we returned back from um, holiday break and working so hard to make sure we have adequate masks. Um, 95K, one of the highest quality masks we can get for every kid in every school that can be replenished a couple of times during the week. Um, to now having a discussion uh, about mask and when do you um, mask and unmask and roll back the mask um, mandates of practices. It's going to be a discussion led by um, executive director Richie. But full disclosure that um, there are some things we have to do as we begin to do that. And so I just want to say um, some of that because um, things are changing so very quickly. Um, that sometime we're just um, in awe. And yet we pivot and adjust, and yet we pivot and adjust, and yet we pivot and adjust um, to the point of it becomes super taxing. Um, and that aside, we still want to do what's best for our kids and staff in the spirit of being safe and moving um, not um, by ourselves, but moving collectively together as we make sure we get everybody input about the how. The what is non-negotiable. We are um, enthusiastically looking forward to the day that we can roll back the mask and be where we were once upon a time pre-COVID. Um, with that, I'm going to pause and turn it over to our chief um, COVID liaison, our executive director, Alexia Ritchie.
Thank you, Superintendent Wells and President Hinckley for your introductions tonight. I'd like to pull up my screen if I could and start by letting you know that normally I'm giving a protocol and progress update. Um, today I did want to devote just a little bit of time to the context of our district in terms of um, vaccination rates and um, testing rates, and then jump into the board discussion on outdoor masking um, recommendations. Our current um, Albany Unified School District vaccination and testing status is broken down here by secondary, and that includes Albany High School and McGregor High School, as well as the middle school for ages 12 and up, as well as for middle school students who are 11 years old. Um, what I've done over to the far right is showing you the percentage of students who are either vaccinated. Again, this is confirmed vaccination and/or their um, confirmed testing. Um, and as you can see the breakdown, if we were to look at Albany High School and McGregor High School, um, we know that 98.6% of those students are either vaccinated or being tested. We have 16 students that we are still tracking down at the high school level. Um, the middle school is broken down as well, and the elementary schools are on par with each other. Again, within a percentage point or so of each being right around 95% average for those students who are vaccinated and are being tested. So the bottom line is for our district of right around 3,500 students, we have 96.2% of them accounted for either being vaccinated or being tested. And again, we are still doing our best to try to reach out to those individuals that we've had not response. Again, just to the vaccination question, we actually are looking through our no response students and have found that quite a few are participating in pool testing. So when my next report comes around, we do hope that number is smaller. But again, we are looking at um, a little over 96% of our students being accounted for in our district. Um, I'd like to open it up now to the board's discussion on the current masking guidance for schools and like to preface this with the current guidance for schools in Alameda County. Um, the California Department of Public Health is recently, as February 7th, which is the most published um, Department of Public Health recommendations for schools. Um, and I quote that masks are required for all individuals in the following indoor settings, regardless of vaccination status. Again, that's an indoor settings. Surgical masks or higher level respirators such as the K95 mask that superintendent Wells was just referencing with a good fit are still highly recommended. So now I'd like to present some considerations for our masking guidance and in particular for outdoor guidance. Again, the current guidance is very specific for indoors and that stays in place for K through 12 schools. There certainly is going to be some very interesting headlines the next couple of weeks or months, but the current guidance for indoor schools remains the same for kindergarten through 12th grade. And as Dr. Wells mentioned, we did do a lot of work recently in this district with an emphasis on having students and staff all wearing K95 masks. I'd like to thank all of the community members who donated masks, who stood outside of schools and distributed masks um, to Dr. Wells and to our chief maintenance and operations director, who was able to ascertain enough masks, small sizes, medium sizes and adult sizes for all students and staff to have a ready supply of those. So now I'd like to open it up to some considerations when we're looking at outdoor masking. Some things we might consider would be to begin with our secondary grades, those students in sixth grade through 12th grade. We might begin to look with outdoor PE classes. Some classes are indoors, but let's take a look at those PE classes that are held outdoors. Outdoor PE classes are held both at the middle school and the high school. And in our next bullet point, we hope to phase in then perhaps those PE classes and even recess times for our elementary students. That would be the next phase. And again, I'd like to emphasize this point because it is very important, especially just having discussed the behavior matrix and the social emotional competency work at the middle school. You know, this is not a requirement or a recommendation to take masks off in an outdoor setting. In fact, this discussion should keep in mind that masking for outdoor activities will still be supported in our district. And that ample supplies of masks, whether they're worn inside or outside, will still be available at all school sites. Um, those are just a few of the considerations that we wanted to um, entertain as we opened up our discussion about outdoor masking in our district. And at this time, I would welcome feedback and your discussion points.
I guess I'd like to start by hearing a little more about what the district office, you and superintendent Wells are thinking about this, partly because um, our existing protocols, you know, the only vote, official vote the board has ever taken about the protocols was to approve aligning with the county and state at the beginning of the fall. So the, you have been able to make adjustments in our protocols throughout the year in response to changes in guidance and so forth. And so I'm, maybe it would be helpful to hear what your process would be for, before the board begins to discuss, what would your process and what is your thinking look like right now about when you would be making these kinds of changes? And I, I see you've outlined sort of a, a set of considerations, but are you thinking about a timeframe for this or a process that could help us ground the discussion and where the staff are heading at this point?
Um, thank you. I'll begin and then certainly um, ask um, Dr. Wells to share his um, thoughts as well. Um, one of the first things we want to make sure that we're doing is engaging our stakeholders in this collaboration. Um, it's important for us to work, for example, with our teachers, specifically our PE teachers, as we're reaching out to them with this outdoor masking lift and making sure that we've heard their concerns and that we're addressing their concerns um, to the greatest extent possible. Um, the next one I would probably refer to would be our metrics and our data, looking at our current case rates. Um, looking to make sure that we are still in decline. Um, as you know, we're using a different set of metrics and so far we have seen a steady decline in the number of positive cases in our district. But I think it's very important to acknowledge that we are not at zero, that we still have cases being reported daily. And so it's important to watch those metrics carefully to make sure that even if we make some changes, we're not adversely affecting those metrics. And then um, you asked a good question about the timeframe. One thing that we certainly want to acknowledge is that we do have an upcoming break. Upcoming breaks tend to see after the break, a slight increase in cases, especially those um, family members that might have been traveling. Um, as you know, as a result of traveling, there is some recommended guidance for quarantine. And so it would be um, something to consider to not have a pivot, um, especially right after a school break. And to make sure that you're watching those metrics, again, after engaging your stakeholders, to make sure that your starting date aligns with all of your um, your green lights when it comes to those decisions.
And let me add the um, timing as we become um, strategic was in consultation with um, our ATA leadership in terms of timing um, and moving together. Um, and we realized that um, this needs to be sooner than later, especially when we start to talk about um, removing outdoor masks um, and going into the phase in process. We also wanted to adhere to our state and county guidelines. As you know, the governor was going to have a big announcement on Monday um, yesterday. And that announcement was uh, really punted to the California Department of uh, Health, where our, our chief um, health official, Dr. Galey, had said that they're going to make a decision um, on February 28th, somewhere around March, actually. Um, and we don't know what that's going to be as it relates to the mask guidelines, more specifically indoor. But outdoor, um, we wanted to start moving forward um, by having um, some wonderful discourse and input um, led by our school site principals with their staff and teachers around some basic training. For example, at the elementary school, there's a lot of safety issues um, related to that with masks. Where, where are they going to put their masks when they finally go outside and get to remove them? Um, are they going to carry it on the table? Um, are they going to put it on their um, in their pockets or where might they do that? Um, in a safe place where they're not um, being mixed and matched and kids putting on the wrong mask when they go in? All of that stuff needs to be worked out and it's, and needs to be talked about so that we can provide the children an overview um, as some practice so that we can continue with good, healthy protocol practices. Um, and that's why we never want to move overnight. We want to move utilizing a very thoughtful process to keep folks safe. When you go to our school campuses, contrary to what uh, many adults may be thinking in our neighborhood or some adults, um, the kids are having, uh, the masks are not bothering them, generally speaking. They're, they learn to function and work really well with them. And we think um, them waiting another week or two for us to work out some kinks with our teachers so that we can move um, forward together um, consistent with our goal number three. Um, and then it goes to the old adage, uh, move slow so that you can move lightning, lightning fast. And that's the approach we want to use as we do it in a more thoughtful way. And as we do it, as executive director Alexia Ritchie said, in a phase in or phase out way. And so um, we're, um, we're excited about the opportunity to, to have masks removed, but we also want to do it together so that you're not just safe. When people say, hey, it's safe to do that, um, I think that's limited thinking. Because safety is just not in the perspective of, okay, the data, but we have the psychological safety um, of our staff, um, and some of our kids. And so we take that into, to play, but not to use that as a reason for slowing down. We want to speed up, but we just want to do it thoughtfully and together. And we're going to have the pandemic behind us very soon. Um, and so we say, work with us, um, give us your input. And um, we are all on board and, and phasing back the mask, starting with the um, outdoor removing of masks. I hope that was helpful.
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe I'll restate what I think I'm hearing, just in case I'm off. Um, so you are beginning to have conversations with staff, including PE teachers and principals and other teachers about the removal of outdoor masks. I think we all, we're not talking about indoor masks at this meeting where that, that wasn't on the agenda title. So just for the outdoor masks. So just to be clear, you are starting the conversations and you are planning to begin to move forward with not requiring them perhaps in that order of phase in that um, director Ritchie presented. And you're waiting until after the break, but maybe it would be a little bit. I don't know if you can add a little more about the timing that you're thinking about, just so that the board is informed when, when we start our discussion about, you know, where is this process heading without us having a discussion, just so we have some clarity about the timeframe that you're talking about.
We, we played with some possible scenarios around timeframe. Realizing that we haven't had full discourse with our teachers, um, our principals with our teachers. Um, and so executive director um, today, as we were reviewing once again, some possible timelines. Um, we were looking at, for example, um, starting um, the first phase of it the um, week after we come back, because we want to revisit the data. Hoping that we still are going in the right direction, because if we're not, we don't want to um, go ahead and do something that's not healthy. Um, so it, we're being very cautious, although we're very optimistic, but it's based on the data. And so in the best of worlds, if we had um, discourse and had teachers and principals have time to work out some um, discussions and some kinks, we will look at, for example, I think March 7th with the outdoor PE and maybe the next week would be um, March 14th. We would look at some um, outdoor masking at the um, secondary. And we may even consider that time around um, elementary, if elementary was ready to do that. If not, maybe the following week. So that's kind of what we conceptually looking at um, possibly. And that is assuming that we had enough discourse for people to work out the kinks and that we allow us to move um, forward together. Worst case scenario, in order to have all the phases done, might be the first week in April. And so that's what we're looking at and playing with a tender timeframe.
All right, great. Thank you. I think that's a good foundation for the board to, to weigh in. So don't everybody raise your hands at once, but I will open it up for a board discussion. Yeah, trustee Doss.
Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Uh, but I think I'll start with um, was there uh, any follow-up um, from the, where with the uh, special education department around um, mask and uh, kind of how things, how things are going there? And the possibility of, you know, having um, students, you know, wear masks or not wear masks while participating uh, in the different, you know, uh, special education.
The short answer is yes, and to let Dr. Biggs take that to expand on it. Um, because especially it played a significant role, ranging from the various programs and him and his staff been talking about scenarios and what that would look like um, moving forward. So Dr. Biggs, if you'd be so kind to um, share some of those scenarios with um, the board, that would be great.
Oh, thank you so much, uh, superintendent Wells and uh, thank you, board. Um, you know, in brief, you know, since the beginning of the school year, we've uh, supported. You know, in brief, you know, since the beginning of the school year, we've supported all of our, our special education staff with various different PPE equipment in order for them to make sure that their students are safe as well as themselves are being protected. And it's, it's not a clear answer of one or the other. You know, every single student is different. There's certain groups that it is very difficult to be able to participate in their specialized instruction, such as speech therapy for a student that has articulation. It's different for a student that may be receiving a specialized academic instruction, which doesn't require a teacher or the student to be able to, to demonstrate oral movement. But one thing that does stand out is articulation. And the speech therapist and myself have had long conversations about what do we do? And we've had various different ideas such as utilizing shields using clear masks that we provided for our, our students, as well as having students being seen for outdoors, for speech therapy, for articulation specifically. Now, some of the times our students are seen in groups, which can be really difficult when we're thinking about minimizing the, the, any type of transference of potential COVID or any other issues. And so what we've done this year for students that have had articulation is we've really tried to have individual sessions for those students when possible. And with, with support from the family to be able to say, let's see, we can be seen outside or that they can be seen inside with the protection of shields from both themselves, as well as the provider, as well as a, a Plexiglas shield between the two of them as well. So we all have, we, we have various different PPE equipment in place and supports in place in order for, for students to be seen. Now, every provider is different, every student is different. And the one thing that I would say is that for any student or any family member that is concerned about their student receiving specialized instruction or specialized services and the concern about wearing masks, bring it back to the IEP team and sit down and talk through what can be done in order to ensure that the student's services are being implemented and the student is making adequate educational progress on their goals. And so one thing that, another thing that we've done is in order to be able to, to, to manage being able to break up groups that may be doing articulation is we've increased on a temporary basis, some of our FTE for speech pathologists within the district. You know, historically, we've had 6.0, that's six speech pathologists in the districts. This year, we have an additional 1.5 that has been put in place to help with management of students for these specific reasons, as well as compensatory education services and learning loss.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. So I just want to make sure, so it sounds like a lot of, a lot of great things have been, you know, kind of talked about and, and researched. And so are these upcoming things that are going to be, you know, implemented, you know, in the near future, or are these things that are happening right now?
They, they are things that are happening right now. And so, you know, since the beginning of the year, we've been, we've been discussing this as, as a speech, a speech team. As far as different ways to be able to manage students who have articulation disorders to receive speech therapy services so that they can really work through seeing oral motor movements, which are a part of working on articulation. And every speech provider has, has been part of these conversations and has been given, you know, the, the, the green light to be able to, to talk to families and think through how we can support students to receive these services. And again, I, you know, I can't speak for every single, you know, speech provider that's out there. But if any parent has concerns of their students making adequate progress along their goals based on having to wear a mask, we need to be able to bring it back to the IEP team. Talk to your case managers, also talk to your respective program specialists too. So it's, it's an ongoing conversation in special education. You know, as, as we always say, you know, an IEP is, is a fluid document. And we're doing our best to navigate some of the, the challenges that come with, you know, COVID. And I feel like, you know, we've had some really great guidance from our SALPA with regards to what we can do and supporting students and their unique needs, specifically with articulation. Now, I know it's not just articulation that, that is, that is an issue for students wearing masks. But it is one of the most prevalent ones that we are trying to address through some of these different means for supporting students. Like I said, utilizing shields for both the provider as well as the student and making it a one-on-one and one-on-one session versus a group session for articulation, as well as we have various cleared masks, which haven't been the best, but we've trialed various different ones. And then also utilizing outdoor space with parent consent. And then also you, using a PP, a Plexiglas divider within a room with, with a circulate, air circulation.
Okay. My last question on this topic, and then I'll kind of circle back later, let others kind of dive in. Is what are the, and this might not specifically be for you. I don't know, anybody can kind of jump in. But what are the kind of rules and regulations around providing vaccination status? So for example, if we're looking into having a student come in and do, you know, speech or some type of physical therapy, is the parent allowed to ask if the speech therapist that their child is going to be working with is vaccinated? If they're not going to be wearing a mask during that time? Or is a speech therapist allowed to ask if the student is vaccinated? Or kind of what are the, what are the rules and, and regulations around that? I would imagine that both parties, you know, as they kind of, you know, venture into this uncharted, you know, territory might, you know, want to know that. But, you know, kind of what are their rights? Can they ask? And then if they do find out, is staff allowed to decline that? Can they say, you know, this student isn't vaccinated, I don't feel comfortable? Or can the student say, you know, the staff member isn't vaccinated, I don't feel comfortable?
I, I can answer some of that only because I've been talking to a number of attorneys about exclusion. When can you exclude a kid? And so basically, we, we don't have the right to exclude a kid from public education. As we know, absent of some additional laws that may come into play, that are scheduled to come into play fall of 2022. So for example, if you found, if a teacher found out a kid is unvaccinated, we don't have the right to say, we got to come provide you services because you're unvaccinated. That kid can have a religious exemption or be eligible for one. So for that piece, we do know the answer to that. Can a parent come in and ask a teacher, are they vaccinated and unvaccinated? I guess you can ask and the teacher don't have to respond. So, and, and so that piece, I feel more comfortable with an attorney asking that legal question. Because vaccination is so, and I just give you my own take. It's associated with your, your medical conditions. I, I mean, it's a medical. So I, I've been more comfortable circling back with one of our attorneys regarding that question, Trustee Doss.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I, I, you know, happy to, you know, wait and kind of, you know, do the research around that. Just as we're thinking about, you know, having, you know, students, you know, take the mask off or having, you know, you know, staff take the mask off to participate in these activities. You know, I'm sure people are going to be thinking about it and I just want to make sure that we are careful about, you know, how we approach it and, and that everybody feels, you know, as comfortable as, as possible. So maybe we can, you know, kind of figure out details around that and then, you know, maybe communicate that out to individuals in that department that might be participating.
Vice President Duran.
I just have one question that I would like to ask our COVID coordinator, Ms. Ritchie, which is, could you tell us very specifically, what is Alameda County Public Health Guidelines relate regarding masking outdoors for our students?
So there currently aren't guidelines for outdoor masking. There's current guidelines for indoor masking via Alameda County.
That's, that's what I wanted to know. There are no guidelines. They have not recommended masking outdoors for students. Is that correct?
As far as I know, that's the current guidance, again, just for indoor masking.
Okay, thank you.
Student Board Member Lyra.
Hey, so I just had like a question and then like some general like thoughts. So my first question was just about like whether or not we know if students have booster shots? Like, are we collecting information on that yet? I feel like that, like let's just make the vaccine more effective. And I think that is a very important factor in like knowing at this time as well, like, yeah, what that status is for students.
Yeah, so the current guidance for boosters is actually very specific to, actually, I believe it's ages 18 and above. For those in that age range, 12 to 17, the state guidance, as well as the local guidance, still indicates that they are considered fully vaccinated if they've had the first primary series of vaccines. They have not included the boosters yet to determine vaccination status for that age group. What we do know though is 18 and above.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, just can I make sure that your, your actual question is answered, which is for students that have gotten boosted, since they are, many of them are eligible, we're not currently collecting that data, right? So we don't know how many of our, I think it's now 12 and up students have been, have received a third shot. Is that right?
Correct. We have not canvassed our community yet for the booster, nor have we with our adult staff members. What we have collected though is people who have voluntarily given us the booster information, in which case, if it's a student, we note that in their area's medical record.
Thank you for like elaborating, President Hinckley and Director Ritchie. I think, yeah, like hearing that makes more sense to like why we might pause on collecting that information. But I feel like when it comes to just understanding that and knowing what that status is, I personally don't really feel comfortable like making any solid decision without knowing where students are at with their boosters. But yeah, then again, not every student can get one at this moment. I also wanted to, like two other thoughts. I wanted to touch on the fact, and I think Allison can elaborate on this too, that in our experiences at the high school, in terms of like in our classroom discussions, we've noted, like we've talked about this, Allison and I, that students don't necessarily feel super strongly about like making any sort of like particular decision at the high school. Students like have mixed feelings, so it's hard to like say what the like assertion is. But some one common understanding is that students feel that there should be different metrics for each school site. Because at the high school, students like don't necessarily feel like they have the experiences or the need for social emotional learning or articulation support that somebody at the younger levels might, might feel or need. So that's something that Allison and I wanted to articulate. I don't know if you want to like talk more about that, Allison? I was just, I wanted to bring that to the discussion.
Yeah, um, a lot of students gave us feedback that they thought that there should be like different tiers, I guess, of like mask wearing in the district. And I mean, we'll probably be surveying them and doing a lot more once midwinter break is over and like we have more than a week. But I do know for sure that a lot of students felt very strongly about not having like a, a shared policy throughout the entire district.
Thank you. And I think like, one more note to that is just that, but yeah, Allison and I talk about this every time an issue comes up. But we just really want to make sure that student voice is prioritized and that we get student speakers to come to the Board of Education and express their opinions. This is something that affects us as we're the ones in the halls every day and interacting with our classmates indoors and outdoors for hours upon hours every day. So this is something that, yeah, we just want to articulate and like ensure that you guys know that we really are looking to you all to make sure that students get their voices heard and that we have speakers here. And Allison and I will do our part for sure, but it's just really important that like this issue is something that not only the parents have input on, but also the students, especially considering like last year's discussions surrounding hybrid reopening. Only, I mean, at the high school in particular, there was just this really big like, I wouldn't say scism, but there was definitely a, like a contrast in opinion between the parents and the students. And I really like, I, although contrasting opinions are really great to hear, just making sure that student voices are prioritized and listened to just as much as anyone else is, I think it's really important.
Trustee Davidson.
Um, just, okay, one question. The sixth to 12th grade starting, is that a logistical reason? Or is that a safety reason for starting with only the older students first?
Good question. Thank you, Trustee Davidson. The, looking at secondary as the phase in, again, kind of looking at our metrics, the numbers of students that are vaccinated are slightly higher at the secondary level, although we are looking at our 11-year-olds very carefully. And we also know that the, again, the ability to, let's say, access the booster might be there. The ability to, you know, remove the mask safely, the ability to still, you know, maintain, let's say, six feet of distance, if that's the priority, for example, that particular activity. We just thought that it would be easier, again, according to the vaccination metrics and the ease of which students can transition to wearing masks indoors and then taking them off and keeping track of them outdoors, would have been easier to phase in for secondary first.
Okay, um, I think that, so I really liked what President Hinckley said in the beginning that related this back. The only decision that the board has ever made was that we would follow state or county guidance. And I feel like we are spending a lot of time talking about this and assessing it. But I really just want to encourage us to follow our state and county health guidance from those health officials and follow what is required by them. And I also want to reiterate that if something is a logistical issue, then we can put plans in place. I have some ideas to help. Teachers can reach out. I'd be happy to help with ideas for how to address the masks on and off on the yard for the younger learners. But I really want us to think about this in terms of what are, what is the Alameda County guidance, what is the state guidance, and then what is our district doing?
Let me, let me say thank you for that. I appreciate that, Trustee Davidson. Just for clarification, this guidance of being allowed to have no mask outside has been in the play for a very long time. We just thought at the beginning of the year, it made sense to be consistent and not confuse kids. Now we had a point with the data where we can consider and, and should do it, do it. We just want to do it together and maybe we can do it, maybe not in a phase where high school, middle and elementary, maybe we can do it all together where people don't have to wait. It's really contingent upon all the input we get, starting with the board, our teachers and our community. And we, we take all the help we can in terms of strategies, especially at the elementary school. We're first timers with this. And so any help and input we can get, we're really open to it. And we look forward to the day sooner than later, we could say bye-bye to the mask because, because COVID-19 for the most part is behind us. So when we shared our, our concepts in terms of thinking, it was just that we're not tied to anything. Of course, it's going to be continued upon input, especially input we get from the board and our staff. I, I just wanted to reiterate that.
I just wanted to add one other piece of context to how the, how the situation has evolved over the year, which is that even though the county never required outdoor masks, the modified quarantine policy the modified quarantine policy that the state and county articulated required that if students had an exposure in school without a mask on, that they were not eligible for modified quarantine, that they would have had to stay home for ten days. So particularly before all of our students were vaccinated, the choice to require outdoor masking at Albany was in large part to keep kids in school, to keep them from having a quarantine. That guidance was changed several weeks ago, so that's no longer a requirement. Now, any, you don't have to keep kids out of school if they're exposed without a mask. So this is why many other districts are also moving toward removing outdoor masks. And this has been a hot topic in the weekly county public health calls. So it wasn't just an extra layer of mitigation that we were providing. It was also a way to make sure that children could stay in school if they were exposed. So I just wanted to remind us of that kind of progression. But it is true that now that's no longer the case. There's no longer that incentive to require outdoor masks. And there's no county guidance, there's no state requirement that we do it. So now it is really a choice that, that Albany has made that is not in line with any county policy or state policy. I, I will just say, oh, there, the other thing I wanted to say about the, just the overall COVID protocols, because the agenda item had a, a broader title, is I wanted to make sure staff talked about a couple of things. One is we have already changed some protocols around field trips. We heard that there are going to be some in-person band events. And so I wanted to let the community know and reinforce for the board that there are more activities beginning to happen. We have, staff has decided to begin to allow many more field trips. So I wanted to make sure we give you a chance to, to describe what's allowed now, what those changes are. And then also just confirm that we're not making other changes right now in things like testing protocols. Because I know some of the community emails, people seem to have concerns that we were gonna stop testing kids or things like that. So I, I wanted Superintendent Wells or Director Ritchie for you to make sure you hit those two points before we move on, just so that we know the full scope of changes that are being made and what changes aren't being made outside the outdoor masking.
I'll start with reiterating that we are not changing our testing protocols. In fact, those are in line with not just current recommendations, but actually current requirements. For example, our student athletes are still required to be tested weekly. And as we've reported previously, we're very proud of the over two thousand five hundred students that are participating in pool testing. That's the surveillance testing. And then I know Superintendent Wells has some updates about particular events that are now taking place in person. Remind you that our Black History Month program is tomorrow and it's in person for the first time in two years.
Superintendent Wells, could you talk about the field, the changes that have been made to allowing field trips and other activities?
Yes, during the height of the pandemic, we went ahead and disallowed field trips, especially at the elementary school for the obvious reasons. Starting March first, elementary are allowed to start back field trips. And we're excited about that. So there's a semblance of coming back to the normal we, we once knew. And so we are making progress in terms of lifting a number of restrictions. And so we're starting to be in a position to do that because of our current climate.
Great. Thank you for, for clarifying those two things. Trustee Boyd.
Thank you. I just wanted to understand from a process standpoint. I know that we referenced talking with our labor partners and, you know, teachers and staff and administrators. And as far as specifically about outdoor masking and changes to the current district policy on that. I just wanted to understand, not that I'm suggesting that, you know, there would be things put in place, you know, against what, what people feel comfortable with, but, but from a process standpoint, because these things can start to sort of take time and can have an impact on how quickly, you know, the district is able to, to pivot and change certain policies. I just wanted to understand if there is a requirement for, you know, some sort of structured discussion or decision-making with regard to changes in the policy and then that needing to be signed off on in, in some sort of formal way, you know, from, from the ATA, as we've discussed, I think the kind of requirement was that we be in line with county or state guidelines. So since it doesn't seem like this is a county or state guideline, I would think perhaps there isn't a, any requirement as far as, you know, a formal sort of decision to be made. But, but I just wanted to have some clarity around that, please.
Let me try to answer the, a piece of that, Trustee Boyd. We don't necessarily have a requirement, but we have agreements and a commitment. And when we look at our three goals, we think that very seriously. The first one is, you know, student achievement, the second is the whole child. And the third one applies to part of the issue that you raised and communication leading together. And that means leading with all of our stakeholders. And so when we look at the what and the how, we make sure our stakeholders have input on how best to do that. And we work best when we do that. And so it's based on a principle in terms of how we do that. And, and, and we find that to be most effective. I really love and appreciate that goal. Because it causes us to pause and get input. And when we get input, it shows respect to all parties. And it reminds us, it takes the whole village to get this work done and moving forward. So for that piece, we do it based on that principle of leading together, opposed to making a decision overnight. There are rare occasions where I have to make an executive decision overnight. This is not one of them.
I'd like to add too that the, the voices from the students were very telling this evening. And I do appreciate Trustee Lyra and Trustee Dana, you know, definitely voicing their own feedback and their own observations about their discussions and masking at the secondary level. And to, you know, reiterate that any decisions made, it's not a requirement then that masks be removed outside. You know, this is going to be a really kind of a personal choice for some folks. It's going to be based in terms of their own risk factors, not just for themselves, for their health, for the health for those at home. And so whatever decision or whatever direction the district goes in, we do need to remind folks that this is still somewhat of a personal choice. And it's going to be something that has to be really carefully and with sensitivity, you know, brought to our community. This is a very passionate topic for many of our community members. It's a life or death topic for many of our community members. And so we just want to make sure that our communication is very clear and thorough. And I appreciate how Dr. Wells is trying to do this again with our stakeholders in the district.
Great. Thank you for that summary. So speaking of our passionate involvement of our community, we will now move to, seeing no other board comments, we'll now move to public comment. And then I'll bring it back to see if we have some general direction from the board. So if folks could put their hands up, so I have an idea of how many commenters we have. Oh, and I think, actually, I'm not sure we still have Ms. Shen with us. I was waiting for the timer, but.
Yep, I'm almost there.
Oh, okay.
Buried behind like fifteen windows. I had a.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. I thought, I knew you had to step away for a second, so I wasn't sure if that was still the case.
No, thank you. Thank you for being patient with me.
Great, thank you. So we'll start with Chris.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. And I want to thank the board and the district leadership for their efforts and thoughtful response to the data and information during these difficult times. We are so happy that the cases and hospitalizations are coming down and there is hope that we are moving out of the pandemic. But even though cases are trending in the right direction, there's a lot of uncertainty in our area. And there's, if there's anything to be learned from the Omicron surge back in Jan, January, is that the virus is only days away from spreading widely yet again. I fully support careful consideration for our safety measures and how best to implement them for our children. But we are clearly not at the point where we can make assumptions about how these cases are going to change. And while our school-aged kids can, can and should be vaccinated, many of the families in our district have younger children who cannot be vaccinated yet. And there are others that have health conditions that leave them at far greater risk to COVID than most of us. These are the community members that we are caring for by wearing masks indoors and outdoors. I urge you to, to maintain the indoor and outdoor mask mandates until we have clear data that shows that we are in an environment of low cases and transmission. Despite the nice weather recently, we are still in the heart of winter and cases are still very high. I asked that the board have waited a few more weeks to learn the impact the midwinter break has on COVID cases in our schools. And our county cases numbers have fully come down from the recent surge before making decisions on whether to weaken our mask mandates. Because while we are no longer at the peak of Omicron, we still have a very high number of cases compared to the rest of the pandemic. And many in our community are still vulnerable. I'm grateful to Superintendent Wells, Executive Director Ritchie and Trustee Lyra and, and Trustee Dana's thoughtful and measured approach to the mask issue. And I appreciate the, and I humbly request that the board refrain from weakening these requirements and that we continue testing and maintain our protocols. We, we are clearly moving closer to the end of this pandemic and help us minimize these cases. And thanks again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Michael. Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you so much, everyone, for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to add a perspective here on masks and our safety measures as the parent of an elementary school student and someone living with a vulnerable household member who suffers from long haul post-COVID after a mild infection nearly two years ago and the devastating effects thereof. We're certainly not the only family that has higher risks in the district. And as the current surge hopefully continues to recede, there's a strong temptation to roll back many of the protective measures that have allowed our district to be a leader in safely keeping our schools open, such as through testing our recent high-quality masks, which just recently rolled out. I want to highlight here that masks are one of the most powerful tools to prevent spread, keeps us from spreading the COVID germs in the air. And it also filters them when breathing in, and it works best when everyone masks together. Outdoor spaces are certainly a lower risk because of mixing in the air. But especially among our younger kids, we have close contact and grouping of students, such as what occurs on playgrounds, and it still presents some risk. Omicron is incredibly more contagious than previous variants, and fully vaccinated persons can still get sick and spread the virus. And enhanced safety is even more important, and we still don't have the data on this new variant. We've maintained our schools as a safe space. We want to continue these measures, not just to protect the masses, but especially the most vulnerable. And while most of us are now vaccinated at much lower risk, those that are vulnerable, COVID still presents incredible risks. And in fact, a family member passed away over the holidays and they were at risk, at much higher risk. But I think our community understands inclusion and trying to keep people together. And these extra protected measures for our most vulnerable are incredibly important. And I hope we can hold together and move as we see this path to living with COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome.
Yes, thank you for letting me speak. I have a daughter in second grade and a son in seventh grade. And I speak as someone who myself have a compromised immune system myself. And I strongly urge the district to continue considering and ultimately removing masks outdoors. I know our topic today is outdoors. I think all the data already suggests that the risk is minimal. I mean, we've always talked about when kids are vaccinated and they're vaccinated. And adults can be vaccinated if they want. And I think schools are the last space where people still wear masks outdoors. And what I haven't heard in the discussion, and maybe I missed it, is discussion about what are we gaining by allowing students to choose to take off their masks? You know, I have a daughter who has never seen the face of her teacher and her teacher has never seen her face. What about, you know, what is it about these social and emotional connections that we're gaining? And is that worth the minimal risk that comes with taking masks off outdoors? I think the trade-off is clearly in the favor of allowing those who choose to take off their masks. As all of you pointed out correctly, anyone who wants to should still be able to keep it on, of course. And I appreciate all of you for considering this. I think it's a huge step in the right direction for the mental, emotional and social well-being of our kids. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Wendy.
Hi, my name is Wendy Frey. I'm the parent of an Albany junior. I'm here to ask the board not to drop the mask mandate yet. At some point, we will get to a place where that makes sense, but it is too soon. It was only a couple of weeks ago that we were asking everyone to upgrade their masks to K95s. We are not yet through Omicron, which has a higher breakthrough rate. According to the CDC website, transmission is still high in California. We have over twenty thousand new cases daily in California and over a hundred and sixty deaths. We also don't know enough about long COVID to be cavalier about children getting even mild cases. Wearing a mask is not just protective for the person wearing the mask, but for the entire community, including those who are at higher risk. Please continue to safeguard Albany children and teachers with strong safety protocols until the data tells us it is safe to stop wearing masks. And as a final note, I would like to encourage the board to listen to high school voices when making policy decisions at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth.
Hi there. Thank you for letting me address the board. I'm Elizabeth. I'm the parent of a Marin School fourth grader. And I want to share some thoughts about maintaining our masking policies, which have contributed to safety throughout the district. I've been really grateful and appreciative for all the thoughtful measures that the board and staff have taken to keep our kids and families safe during these two-plus years of the pandemic. And I really hope that we can hold the course until the case rate is much lower. I just looked it up on New York Times website and Alameda County is still having eight hundred to nine hundred cases per day, which is the same as the Delta spike of last winter. So I don't read this as at the end of the pandemic. I read this as we're still in a major spike. Cases are definitely coming down, but they're not at a low level yet. So I think it would be prudent to continue using masks throughout the district as a way of serving the common good, which is what public schools do. They serve the entire community, the common good, emphasizing equity and justice. And we need to consider those children and families who are at greatest risk, those who are, I mean, compromised, the under five, the siblings who are under five. We need to work together as a community to protect them in the same way that we work together as a community to care for other people in marginalized or less resourced groups. This is a value that we have in Albany. So I don't want to lose track of this value of the common good in the face of COVID. And I do believe that when case rates come down quite a bit more, it will be safe for people to remove the masks and we will be thrilled about that. But we're not at that point of end up, end in the city yet, so please don't remove masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea.
Hey, everyone. I really want to thank the district so much for being so thoughtful with these processes. And I'm thinking about the saying about how the true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable. And it's amazing that we're hopefully entering into a respite. And this might be when our most vulnerable children and families who've been in independent study all year decide that it's finally safe to come back. Into the water that is our schools. And so how do we keep our conditions safe for them? And I wish. That I could actually just stop and hold a moment for all of us. Who aren't in an immune compromised position and I'm not. To think about how privileged we are to even feel comfortable with the idea of starting to removing protections. In a community of care, we would use universal design. We design our environments that everything is accessible for everyone. So how can we think about that in these lulls in the waves that we're experiencing? How can we think about universal design when it comes to the protections? That we provide in our community? We wouldn't ask our most vulnerable to engage in one way masking so the rest of us can be mask free. And thinking about our youngest children, our families with young children, our elderly, our families with elderly living in their homes, immune compromised. So ideas and to reiterate what the student said as well, create a community engaged process. Ask teachers, I understand nationally about 50% of our teachers fall into a high risk category. Engage with our student groups. To learn what they want. This really affects their lives and our teens in particular have had very little control. Over their lives in the past couple of years and developmentally, it's so important to be engaging them more than what I've seen in our board meetings recently. Keep a culture of care. You've been doing that really well. As you make changes, have clear criteria based in evidence. Make the information transparent and please use good effective measures. When you're tracking the criteria, please do that first before you remove protections. And please be nimble, keep masks in stock, have testing plans in place. And make sure that we can jump back into protections when we need them. Thank you.
Thank you. Olivia.
Sorry, that's the wrong name for my account is Christian. Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, I wanted to express. A deep respect for the virtue shown by Dr. Wells position, just. Being prudent and careful and wanting to move together in this process. I was moved by that, in fact, by his leadership in this case. You know, I do also want to say really quickly, you know, there's a lot, as has been mentioned, I think that is. After the fact rationalizations about reasons for removing masks that they're causing mental health problems. I mean, that's. It's not borne out by the data and it doesn't really make sense. I mean, wearing a tie is uncomfortable. I don't like it, but it doesn't cause mental health problems and. Wearing a piece of cloth on your face isn't much different. You know. The last thing I want to say, and I hope I don't get emotional here. I have seen some people express a kind of a zeal to move quickly on this to. Even while rates of transmission are high day to get those outdoor masks off because it'll probably be okay. But in doing that, we are not prioritizing the needs of the medically fragile members of our school. Who right now aren't in school. And I didn't hear anything from the board members about that community of which, you know, my family is one. And it is in fact deeply upsetting for me to hear. You know, everyone other than Dr. Wells really not think about the whole of the community. Social justice is about. Prioritizing those in a situation who are the most oppressed, the most vulnerable, the most at risk. Social justice means we put extra effort into taking care of racial minorities, LGBTQ community. And in this case, the medically fragile. And you know, if we can wear masks a little bit longer indoor and outdoor. To help the medically fragile, I think to not do that is a shame and sends a terrible message to our children.
Thank you. Mary.
Good evening, board. Thank you for taking my comments. I'd like to echo all of the previous public commenters, except for the third one. I agree with all of them except for that one third. And I'd like to start first by thanking the. Executive administration, both Dr. Wells and Alexa Ritchie for moving very judiciously. And cautiously on this issue. As you all know, this is all common sense. The surge might be over. But the pandemic is certainly not, unfortunately. You also know that public health unfortunately has been politicized during the pandemic. So even though. Your county public health departments might tell you it is okay to do certain things. Part of that decision is based. Unfortunately, on politics, not on the public health data and interests of the population. As the previous speaker said, there is no evidence yet that masks hurt mentally any of the people that wear it. But there is plenty of evidence that the pandemic does cause mental health issues. And another thing for you to consider, which the previous speakers have said in one form or another. Maybe this would be an appropriate move to make when everyone is both eligible. And has access to vaccinations. Not everyone in our population, especially children under five are yet able to get those. So once we have enough people in that part of the population as well, then. You can proceed, but when the numbers are so high and we're still in the middle of the pandemic, even though the surge. Is going down is not a good time to start removing masks. So thank you for keeping it going.
Thank you. Jonas.
Hi, it's Sarah Bly and I just, I can't help but listen to these comments and wonder if we're really talking about outdoor masking right now. Because that is that for me is what this conversation is about, not indoor masking, not. Not the bigger conversation happening across our country, but outdoor masking, something that we have been able to do. All fall, but we haven't for, I would say, good reasons as Sarah Hankley said, but. Here we are talking about something that we know is a really. Low risk way to give our kids some idea that all the work they've done, that the 95%, 90%, 87%. These incredibly incredible vaccination rates we have means something. It means something. We believe the science that these things mean something and that we can reduce the measure that is actually never even been required. And so I understand, I hear how much work has been done this year and I hear that and I feel that and I see that. But I also want to recognize our kids and what they have given up and what they continue to give up. And I want to give them something. Easy and safe to say, hey, we are okay here. This is okay. And and this is an easy way to do that. I understand it's not. 100% easy, but it's pretty easy way to do that. And it's a low risk way to do that. This is not an indoor mass situation. This is an outdoor mass discussion. And the last thing I guess I want to say is I don't feel that parents with kids in speech have been given the options that were necessarily mentioned earlier in this meeting. And I think it's really important that if those are really available to them. That they know that because I do have a child in speech and. I have never heard these things and had I, I would have absolutely taken advantage of these opportunities. For my son to do his speech therapy without a mask. And so if that is the case, I encourage you to let all the providers know that they should share this with families. Because I think a lot of families would take advantage of it. So thank you.
Thank you. Marian.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm calling in as a member of a high risk family. My perception hopes were always that a public school would be a shared place that would be inclusive. Not excluding, not excluding or marginalizing high risk families. My child has been in independent studies this year. We've been awaiting, waiting, waiting for a chance. When the pandemic would feel safer so we could finally come back. If things. I'm at risk of blindness or stroke. The stakes are high, very high. My child meanwhile is only getting 30 minutes of Zoom school every day. She doesn't have the opportunity for in school classroom, social, emotional learning. Her speech therapy, she's in speech therapy and there was some. Strain in the system and we didn't get it until just a few weeks ago. So like. Everything that everybody else is talking about, it's like so much more restricted for those of us in independent studies and. I'll tell you, everybody in my child's class in independent studies is a high risk family. That's the only reason we're in independent studies. No one else would choose it 25 minutes, 30 minutes of school a day. Now that case numbers are going down, us high risk families finally have the chance to return to in person school on campus. Lowering COVID safety protocols will keep us excluded, marginalized and in independent studies. Without social emotional learning opportunities with only 30 minutes of Zoom class a day. My child is five. I'm so excited to get her in campus, on campus. Please don't lower this safety protocols. Small children cannot socially distance, so unmasking them outdoors is risky. How will they socially distance? Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I really want everyone to consider the risk versus the benefit. We're talking about people's health. And I feel like if people are in the position. That they would like to reward their children and have them not wear masks on the playground. You completely have that. That freedom to do that on your own time, risking your own health. At a public playground. But when you're bringing that into the schools. When we still do not have like, we're not over COVID, we're in the middle of it. We're in the middle of the pandemic. Or we're deep in it. And I don't even know if saying middle is accurate. I don't know how far along we are, but the point is that I don't know when the end is. And we need to continue to protect our most vulnerable populations. I'm really thankful to people who continue to advocate for the health of their families and their children. Especially those who are. You know, in situations where their health is at risk. And I would like for community members to really work as a community. And continue to protect the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I believe that's the end of our public comment. Nope. I knew that would not be the case. All right. We'll take these last two comments and then I do need to bring it back to the board to close out. Starting with Joel.
Good evening, members of the board. Continued outdoor universal masking is an important component of the district's COVID response. Masks protect the ability of all our families to be healthy. When we all wear masks, we are safer and schools stay open. And by all wares, I'm thinking about all of us, including students and staff with underlying health conditions. Families with unvaccinated children at home, students and staff living with elderly family or people with compromised immune systems. Students whose caregivers are frontline workers. Please keep such an important layer of protection in place until COVID has. Unambiguously reached the endemic stage as determined by well defined, consistent public health metrics. As noted by others, even with Omicron receding, case numbers and hospitalizations are similar to or worse than previous waves. And recent declines have actually stalled. The American Academy of Pediatrics. Quote, strongly recommends that anyone over the age of two, regardless of vaccination status. Wear a well fitting face mask when in public, end quote. The AAP also says that, quote, there are no known studies that use of a face mask negatively impacts child speech and language development. I also really appreciate the creativity mentioned by Director Biggs with regard to speech therapy like using face shields or clear masks. Being outdoors isn't a silver bullet for COVID protection. Transmission increases when people are clustered together and unmasking outside ignores the fact that kids won't be socially distanced. They're on top of one another playing basketball, lining up for class, holding together to talk, etc. I know we're all so tired of COVID and so tired of wearing masks. All the work we have done so far does mean something. We're not talking about total lockdowns, remote learning, keeping kids six feet from one another or washing our hands every 10 seconds. We're talking about a simple mask that can help keep surges from coming back or weaken them considerably when they do. Rightfully so, we no longer say it's okay if someone smokes in a restaurant. Others don't have to smoke if they don't want to. This isn't about individuals' risk tolerance. Because of community level impacts, a community level response is needed. Universal mask usage is much more effective than one person wearing a mask. Please keep the decision at bay until we have clear scientific data showing COVID is endemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenna.
Thank you for the last minute comment. Sorry about that. Unfortunately, Omicron is extremely contagious even amongst the vaccinated. Which is a huge shock to the world and it seems really terribly unfair. Dr. Wells made a really good point when he noted that, you know, kids at our schools play normally outside with their masks on. Keeping high quality masks on allows kids of, you know, lots of different groups of friends to mix together and not worry about social distancing, which. Brings a semi semblance of normalcy at this time. We all want to be able to drop the masks outdoors, but let's not do it too soon. Cases and hospitalizations are dropping, but are still at a very high level. It makes sense to look at this again when cases are much lower. I agree, we should make mask, dropping the masks plans now, though. Let's think through the logistics so we can be ready to make a change when the time is a little bit more appropriate. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, let me close that out and then. We can close the timer. And then I just want to give. Board members a chance for if you feel there's any additional direction you want to provide to staff or staff if there's. Any additional clarification or. Details you want to provide about next steps. Yeah, trustee does.
Yeah, there was a parent that spoke about speech earlier and I was hoping. For some follow up there. And then some feedback on how that goes. If I could make that request from Dr. Biggs, I just would like to. Hear about how that goes. In regards to that, just because it was kind of the. Bulk of some of my, of some of my questions, just kind of wondering where we are with that. And then Dr. Wells said that he was going to double check with attorneys. And get back to me in terms of the vaccination. Questions about the vaccination, what we can and can't ask, things of that nature. So. Just kind of some, some clarification around that would be appreciated. And then one of our student trustees asked about the numbers for boosters. So we're not, we're not tracking that at the moment because if you are. 18 and under, then fully vaccinated means you just have both doses, correct? Yeah, so those are all my kind of follow up. Clarifications there.
Vice President Jerome.
Just a few comments here. The first is that I had brought up this as an agenda item for the board to discuss and make a decision. Regarding masking requirement or not outside. Not inside the classroom, but simply a decision regarding students masking or unmasking outside. And I do not feel that this, that we are one stakeholder group that gives input to the superintendent. I feel that the board is the, is appropriate at this time to make a decision. Second, I am not a public health professional. I do not feel that I can look at the data and make a decision. I believe it's up to our public health officials and that in this case is Alameda County. And the state health department. And at this time, as we heard, there is absolutely no requirement for masking outdoors. The third issue is around concerns. There's the issue around the staff concerns. And I definitely think we need to address those and figure out how best to do that. And the same for the parent concerns. And let me just say that in terms of a timeline, we will have time. There will be time to. There will be time to, at least two weeks before, um, this will come back to us for a vote. And so, the superintendent and the staff have time to discuss the, the diverse issues out there with respect to this, um, this topic. In terms of the, the parent concerns, I mean, I think we all hear the, the concerns about the vulnera, the medically vulnerable in our population. And, and, you know, we, I think we, we need to come up with some solutions, some strategy, some ideas of how to address that. And so, it, once again, there's time. And, and I think our parents should have some voice in that. I think Dr. Biggs could have some ideas around how could we make it more feasible and, and maintain the safety for, for this population as we allow, uh, the rest of our students to choose to mask or unmask outside. So, in terms of the framework, um, which is my last comment, the board will not revisit this until one week after the vacation, a full week after the vacation. So we will be able to see what the cases are in our district. I don't think it's necessary for us to look at the county as a whole. I think just looking at, at our community, because this is where the kids are being impacted, on our school sites. And I think we've been doing a great job. I think the community has been doing a great job, in terms of vaccination and in terms of really thinking about the common good uh, and keeping all our kids safe. From, the kids have, have not protested at all about wearing masks. They've been doing it diligently. And, and I, I think it's time for us to have a, a clear vote on, uh, going forward and what we should do for our kids.
Trustee Boyd.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate, um, a lot of what, uh, trustee Doss and Vice President Duran, uh, said. Relate, um, to, to just a couple of things that I wanted to say and, and just wanted to thank all of the members of the community who have emailed and, and made comments, particularly those who, um, shared very personal, um, vulnerable details about themselves and their families. Just want to say, um, thank you for trusting us with that information and, and for, um, participating in this process. That is very difficult and that has no easy answers, um, and no one-size-fits-all approach, unfortunately. I, I just wanted to say, uh, along the lines of what Vice President Duran was saying, that it does resonate with me and I think it's an important thing to keep sight of that, um, we are not, um, medical health professionals and, and that, that's not, um, the call of, of us being in this position and, and just to personally say that I, I felt as if there was somewhat of a lesson learned in that our, our guidelines this time around were tied to, uh, city and or county and state guidelines as I thought that the, one of, at least the purposes of that was to kind of remove the responsibility to be, you know, looking at, uh, scientific data and, you know, be in the position to pretend to be, uh, you know, whatever type of, of trained medical professional, which I am not. So, I do think that, um, it is important to, to kind of learn from what we learned from and to follow the metric that we put in place ourselves to, to make sure that we were not sort of making these decisions ourselves around scientific sort of decisions, but that we were following guidelines that were put in place by those who are trained in this way. And, and then I just also wanted to, to say that I, I very much appreciate hearing from parents who, um, who shared concerns about, uh, you know, what trustee Doss was talking about, about, um, you know, receiving speech services and, and the concerns from certain parents who weren't aware of, of the different types of ways that, um, they could perhaps change the way that services are being, um, provided to their, their children, their students so that, you know, they can see people's mouths and that they can, um, you know, have the full benefit of those services. I would just, I think that it's important to, to make sure that we're making it as accessible as possible to families so that it's not kind of put on families to say, "Well, if you want this to be different, you can kind of approach these, these, you know, your program leaders and you can, you know, make these things happen for yourself." Because I'm sure that, um, it might not feel easy to, you know, kind of add that to the list of all the things that, you know, perhaps certain families are, are keeping track of to, to go and advocate and to during the school day, reach out to this individual person and, and make sure, you know, so I just want to, um, uh, appreciate the services that are provided and the, the different ways that, um, those changes are made to, to make sure that we're providing services in the best way possible to our students and just make sure that that's as accessible to families as possible, so that there isn't a burden placed on families to, to try to figure out how to get those, um, those changes put in place. I, oh, and, and I think lastly, I just wanted to say that I, I very much appreciate, um, hearing from our, our student board members about the importance of, of making sure that we're, um, being really proactive about, um, soliciting, um, feedback from our, our students. And, uh, I, of course, I hope that our students, uh, know that they're always welcome to, to email us and to, to participate in the board meetings to the extent that they can and that it doesn't, you know, kind of conflict with, like, doing school and all the things that are, that are on your plates, but, but I also want to make sure that we are, are being proactive about, about getting that feedback from students so that we are, um, having as many voices at the table as possible and especially that very important, um, voice from the actual people or some of the actual people who are, you know, with the masks on all day and, and having to, to kind of do their life, um, in that environment. Uh, I think that's it.
Trustee Doss, is that a new hand or a hand from before?
Um, no, that was a hand from before, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, I just wanted to make a comment and then I'll try to outline what I think is happening next. So I will say, I am also, believe it or not, not a public health professional. But I have sat in hours and hours of meetings that were held for board members and, and school officials with the county public health department and the county office of education. Certainly not as many hours as Director Ritchie and Superintendent Wells have sat in. Um, but throughout all year, the theme, when people have asked about outdoor masking and outdoor transmission, is that, that our county health director has been very strongly voicing, the idea that outdoor transmission is just as significantly or almost vanishingly small risk outside. Now, that's one public health professional and I understand that people believe public health, some public health officials have been politicized and so forth, but I think at the end of the day, I feel confident relying on what I hear our county public health officials saying. So I, as trustee Boyd said, I very much appreciate families who are vulnerable sharing those stories and, and I don't want, um, I don't think anyone on the board minimizes those concerns or feels that we're in a situation where we're willing to make compromises in safety in order to move on. I think what we're talking about here is weighing information that we have learned throughout this pandemic. Um, I remember when they closed all of the regional and state parks, um, at the beginning of the pandemic, because we thought that was a good way to prevent transmission before we really understood this virus. So we have been learning, um, throughout and I, I just want to acknowledge how complex that is. You know, that we're all trying to, uh, understand the expertise of those who study things that we don't study and it's complicated, it's emotional, it's, um, people have a lot of really strong feelings about it and none of this is very, um, easy, but I want to be, I just want to state that I don't think anyone on this board, I know that no one on this board is thinking, here's a trade-off and I'm willing to make it. But we've been told repeatedly from our county health officials that outdoor transmission is not the risk that people thought it was two years ago. Um, so that I just wanted to state that that's, um, where I'm coming from in this discussion. And just to acknowledge the incredible complexity of the situation and that everyone is really doing their best to try to protect their families and to understand a really complex set of factors. Um, and I really appreciate how this whole community has taken that on. So I wanted to outline what I think are the next steps as I'm hearing them from the staff. And I also really appreciate the thoughtfulness that, that that's been presented with. So, we have a, a set of next steps on better understanding and communicating to families about some of the options for support programs, special education, speech therapy, um, all of, all of that category of um, activities that might be, um, better served by the opportunity to engage in some of those activities without masks. The district staff are gonna talk with staff, ATA, some of the teachers, like PE teachers that might be particularly, um, have some thoughts about this, as well as the principals, so that, um, I assume those discussions would be happening this week. Nobody's talking to each other next week, I understand. And then, uh, we will have a round of testing the week of the twenty eighth, when we're all back. And so that week, we hope there will be more information about the process. So I'm hoping that staff can keep the board updated that week after break about what the next steps are and what that timeline looks like. Um, and then also that, oh, and in addition, at the same time, getting some additional student input. So I'm gonna ask our student board members to, to help over the next couple of weeks to do that work to try to, um, get that student input and conversation so that we know where students are. So, Vice President Duran pointed out, our next board meeting is March eighth. As I said at the beginning, this is not something that would require a board vote. So if the staff felt like they had a timeline that they could move forward with, um, or we could have another discussion at the March eighth meeting, but perhaps we could get some communication from district staff over the next week, just so that we understand what you're thinking and whether or not there is a need for the board to take some kind of formal action on this. Um, but I'm sensing, I'll let the other two board members speak, but I'm certainly sensing that there's a, a support from the board, or at least a majority of the board, to move forward with the kind of transition that you described. Um, so that is some direction from the board that I'm hearing. Although I haven't heard from trustee Davidson in a while, but I think I captured what you were saying earlier. So, that's my summary of what I think the next steps are, where I think the board's direction is heading and I'll let, um, trustee Doss and Vice President Duran comment on that. And then Superintendent Wells just ask you to summarize what, what happens next. Uh, trustee Doss.
Uh, thanks, um. I guess, I guess my, I guess my worry is that, um, well, two things. One, um, I, I want to thank, uh, the parents for, um, you know, coming on tonight and being vulnerable and, you know, allowing, allowing us to better understand uh, by using personal situations, um, which, you know, is, uh, easier said than done. And, so I wanted to just take a moment to appreciate that, because, um, it helps to kind of provide context, you know, um, to the situation. And I, and everybody's kind of been pretty consistent with saying, you know, "I'm not a health professional. I'm not a health professional." Uh, so I guess I'll jump on that boat and also say, "I am not a health professional." But, uh, like our, uh, president, I have attended, you know, a lot of, uh, meetings uh, and heard from a lot of medical, you know, experts. But I, I, I guess my thought was that we put things in place previously so that we wouldn't be in a position to have to make these medical decisions. And so, because I don't really think it's fair, um, to the board or to the district staff to try and, you know, decipher and figure those things out. I mean, there's people that, um, went to medical school for a long time and then did residency and all these different things in order to be able to speak to these very complex, um, issues. You know, for example, we had, you know, there's certain professions, you know, and even though Vice President Duran is a very, um, accomplished and smart lady, if I needed a lawyer, I would call trustee Boyd. I wouldn't call Vice President Duran, because that's not her profession. And so, the same with the board, we are not doctors. And so, I don't want to be in a position to have to make a decision that should, um, be made by Dr. Moss and Dr. Chivaghi and the other doctors that we have been kind of, you know, talking to and working with. So, um, that would kind of be, you know, my, my approach is that, um, I, I thought that we kind of put things in place and voted or whatnot. So that we wouldn't have to make these decisions that come across as if we don't care about everybody, because we do. Um, and we want to keep everybody safe. And I think the way that we do that is by following, um, the recommendations, of the medical professionals, the same medical professionals that told us to go get vaccinated. And so that's what we did. And the same ones that told us to go get boosted. And so that's what we did. Like, we're following them, uh, in all the other um, kind of circumstances. They told us it was safe to open schools, so we opened schools with these precautions. And so I just want to kind of continue to follow that and I don't want to, um, kind of pick and choose or be a doctor sometimes and not be a doctor other times. I didn't go to medical school and I don't plan on going, because it's, it's too late for me. So, so I'm hoping that we can, um, you know, kind of just follow, you know, the, kind of what we already kind of had in place and, and, and go with that, um, to continue to keep everybody safe.
Just to clarify, when you say follow what we had in place, you mean the vote, the board took to follow the county and state guidance? Or you mean follow what the outdoor mask requirement that we currently have in place?
Oh, to follow the, um, when the board voted to, for the, um, county and health, you know, guidelines and...
Got it. Vice President Duran.
Well, as a follow-up then to, um, trustee Doss, I think that, um, I, I would like to recommend, and if we have to, if we need to put this to a vote, that, uh, we follow through and, um, have our following meeting have a review and action on this specific item of masking outdoors, um, and come up with a resolution. The, the mandate to, to have the masking outdoors was one that the superintendent had presented to us. And so, so now is the time for, for the board to make a decision as to the masking or not. And as, um, trustee Doss reminded us once again, that, uh, we did say we would follow. Uh, and we agreed with our, uh, ATA partners, that we would follow the, the, the most strictest of the guidelines, and that is the county. And the county has no requirements. And that is why, I guess, unfortunately, we are put in the position to have to make a decision, because one was already made and yet it, it, it does not follow the county guidelines. So, my request is that if we need to have a vote to see if we, um, if we're going to follow through and have a revor, uh, a review and action at our next meeting on March eighth. Because what I heard also was the possibility of mask removal maybe in April. I, I just think we're, we're pushing, we're kicking the can down the road. And, and I think we, we need to, to have a decision, make a decision on March eighth.
So, what I'm gonna do is ask that we get an update on the process and timeline and the conversations with staff in time for us to create an agenda item on March eighth, if we need to do that. So we have time to set that agenda. You know, our practice is, well, I probably said this too many times tonight, it's getting late, has been that we don't, we haven't had to take formal votes to make changes to the protocols, because they've moved in flux with the county. But if, if it appears that that needs to happen, we can... like keep looking over at my calendar, we can, we can figure out if if that's needed. But in the meantime, we will look forward to hearing an update after the maybe as early as this Friday, just on the how conversations and planning are going from the district office. So Superintendent Wells, I, I want to give you the last, or Executive Director Ritchie, just a chance to close out this item.
I would go ahead with Executive Director Richie, you know, saying some final words and then I give my piece.
Thank you, Dr. Wells and President Hinckley. You know, I'm looking forward to moving in concert with our all of our stakeholders. And in my mind, I'm thinking of all of the students that I've observed, you know, really fulfilling the mask mandates, you know, inside and the mask recommendations outside. I, I watch them as they're walking home and if they're taking off their masks or if they're leaving them on. I'd like to reiterate that whatever direction we move in, that it's going to be a personal choice and that we are going to honor with dignity the choice of all of those who decide to either take a mask off outside or keep it on outside. Thank you.
And my last piece is that we're going to move with the spirit and intent that that really resonate with me would go number three, leading together. And I think that's most important that we stay in the spirit of being inclusive, collaborative and transparent. I really appreciate the discourse we had tonight among the community, listening to the board, various viewpoints. And I'm just happy that we can get to a point where we could start talking about rolling back some restrictions and, and doing it in a very thoughtful, cautionary way. And I, and I think that's helpful. I appreciate that the board don't take this lightly. And neither do we as we move forward to make sure our partners continue to give input. And so I'm looking forward to the March eighth board meeting. And and I'm going to end it there for that.
Great. Thank you. All right. So we now move to our review and action item. Yes, review and action item. Sorry, missing a heading on my agenda. The thirteen A, the AUSD comprehensive school safety plans.
President Hinckley, if I could just interrupt real quick, I think I'll be signing off right now. I have a second part of a French test tomorrow and still haven't done math. So thank you so much for this discussion. And I know Chitalk and I will be heading the force on, on getting student opinion. I think we're thinking of leading a forum. So that'll be exciting. And yeah, have a great break, everyone. Thank you so much.
Great. Good night. Thank you. All right, thirteen A, AUSD comprehensive school safety plans. So I'll just, for those of you who were here earlier this evening when we talked about what to do with this item. So the every district is required by law to adopt, to approve comprehensive school safety plans for every year, typically by March first, but this year we have a little bit longer. This item was missing in the open session, this item did not include a redacted version of the comprehensive school safety plan that the board received in closed session. So because we didn't want to move forward with an item that had that didn't have the required information for the public to review, we will not be able to take review and action vote on this item, which is why there was some back and forth about whether to remove it entirely or turn it into a review and discussion item. So per the agenda approval, this is now review and discussion item. We will not be approving these plans tonight. I just wanted to preface our discussion with that. I would like to have a discussion about what the process will be for bringing this back to the board. So I want to give the superintendent a chance to first just say what is here on the agenda for the public, what's in the slideshow and so forth. And then we can have a board discussion about comprehensive school safety plans and how this should be coming back to us and so that we can all be on the page, same page about what to expect and what the process is. So Superintendent Wells, I'm, I'm just going to hand it to you to talk a little bit about this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Hinckley. The presenter tonight, our expert. We went on and told him that we were pulling the items, so he's not here tonight to present and entertain a number of questions. Also, the principals are scheduled to present to me like they do every year by March first or before. Their individual safety plan, that happens every year because safety supersedes everything else. And so that happens and has a primary function of school site principal and leadership. And that, that was not part of this plan tonight. But the comprehensiveness around that would include those plans. And so not being ready with the expert who was going to speak tonight and walk us through each component of the plan and entertain that, we don't have that tonight. But moving forward, we're going to go back and revisit some items and some questions around the items that came up. And some things we noticed as we begin to adjust and bring the item back in the immediate future. I will turn it over to Executive Director Ritchie, who was helping to facilitate this plan, and she may want to add some, some thoughts behind here.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Wells. Just wanted to reiterate that we do have California Department of Education guidance around the timelines for the submission of the comprehensive school safety plan. I did review that today just to make sure I was on track. And the law does require that each school update and adopt the comprehensive school safety plan by March first annually. So that's at the school site. We're a little early, so we were trying to push them, but they are not ready yet. And again, all of the school sites do need to adopt their comprehensive safety school plan by March first. It also requires that the school district approve these comprehensive school plans. But the ed code does not specify a date when it's these safety plans must be approved by the district. However, there is an annual notification for the CDE by October fifteenth of each year if schools have not complied with that requirement. I am happy to report that all of our school sites are actively working with our consultant from Try Group Incorporated on completing their comprehensive school safety plans. Many of them will also be going to their site councils for review and for approval. And then again, our hard stop is by October fifteenth of each year. If we have not received those site plans yet, then we do need to report that to the California Department of Education. But we are happy to report that all of our schools are working very hard to try to meet that March first deadline by having them available for Superintendent Wells to review. We also are, again, very proud of the work that our site principals are doing as they're working on this pretty dynamic template. This template is, again, just for the compliance of the California requirement for the comprehensive school safety plans. What the district also has is an emergency operation plan, otherwise known as an EOP. That information is also somewhat confidential. And so traditionally, that has been shared with the Board of Education, both as an unredacted version during a closed session discussion, as well as a redacted version during an open session. And again, that's considered the EOP or the emergency operation plan. We're on target to completing both of those to be available for the board to review. And again, we're working with our sites to make sure that they meet that March first deadline.
Thank you. So just so I understand, the school safety plans and the EOP, along with the the comprehensive part of the plan, which includes policies and so forth, which is partly what what we have been given, all of that will come to the board for approval. You're thinking this spring or what? When are you anticipating that will come to the board?
We do anticipate that being ready during the month of March. Absolutely.
Okay. Because I just noted in the backup for this item, you know, each school is supposed to forward their plan to the board for approval. And I do see that the school plans are due March first, and then the board will also review the comprehensive district wide and school safety plans, et cetera. So, and approve that at a regularly scheduled meeting. So I just wanted to be sure I understand that when this comes back as an action item, it will look like it did the last time we did this in 2019 with a document that the board receives that's unredacted. And then that same document is part of the public agenda with redactions for emergency protocols, for example, or phone numbers, things like that. Is that what will happen? Okay.
You are correct, along with our consultant who's available to answer any questions.
Okay, great. And any other questions from the board about this item or things that about, sorry, about the process or about comprehensive school safety plans in general, what you, what you want to make sure we are getting in that package? Yeah. Vice President Duran.
I think in our closed session, I had jumped the gun a little bit. Oops. Bad word to use, right? But anyway, there were things I had wanted to mention to be sure that they may be in the plans already that we haven't seen. But I know that this company had talked about number one, prevention and mitigation. And to me, that just raised in my mind things like to be sure that we're able to see in, in the school plans, site thinking fall given that we are now in a pandemic. And what does that mean to them in terms of security? And, and certainly given mental health, et cetera, that, that prevention is really key. And that, that the plans highlight to differentiate what, what, what they had before COVID and what we're seeing today. So that we really do see the, the additional thought that's gone in, given where we are today. Another example of that was school Zoom cyber attacks. And that those are things that, that happened, right? When, when we were with remote learning. And I want to be sure that, that that issue is addressed as a continuing issue. And also, for example, the, the, the behavior matrix that was introduced to us tonight by Ms. Brill and the fact that, you know, how, what role does those behavior matrix play in the safety plan? I think that those were my thoughts for now, and I can certainly share with the superintendent directly any other thing that comes up between now and, and, and when we get, we actual do have this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I have something that actually just occurred to me, which is I, I don't remember from seeing our plan a few years ago whether there's a a district wide emergency communication system to our families and students. Just thinking of a lot of the communications glitches that we were having earlier in the year with Ares. And I know we've moved to a new system with Parent Square, but you know, for example, doing a test communication to families in case of emergency, or I would like to make sure something like that is part of this plan or part of what the consultants are helping us look at, our ability to communicate quickly at like via text to all of our families and students. Because I remember that not being something that we had set up the last time we reviewed this. All right. So we will work, yeah, we will work on getting this back in March, it sounds like as a review and action. And we will be get that presentation from the consultant and then also have those two versions of the full plan available for the public and the board. All right. Thank you. I don't see any public comment on this item. So now I came to the blank spot in my agenda, which I believe is a review and action item, number fourteen A, twenty, the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three LCAP supplement. No, it's a staff report. Sorry. That was the word that was missing. So I will turn it back to you, Superintendent Wells, for this.
Yes, this, this is the opportunity for for staff to present to the board and the community a supplemental LCAP staff report informational. And our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Dr. Anshin, will be presenting before you. Dr. Shin.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Presentation deck, please, Ms. Shin. Good evening, Superintendent Wells, Board Trustees and Albany Community. We are here tonight to learn about the new CDE requirement that has been added to the local control accountability plan called the LCAP supplement. Next slide, please. As a part of the agenda, we will review the requirements of the LCAP supplement, the community engagement efforts related to the use of federal funds, overview of AUSD budget for parents and guardians, the implementation of federal grant expenditures related to LCAP goals, and our next steps in this LCAP process. Next slide, please. LCAP supplement is a new requirement to the local control accountability plan this school year. It builds in accountability for the added federal funds that have been provided during this pandemic. California's 2021 Budget Act, along with other historic state and federal acts, have provided districts with a significant increase in funding. Assembly Bill one thirty was the legislature's response to this huge influx of funding, much of which could not be captured in time for our 2021-22 LCAP. Therefore, the LCAP supplement requirement has been added to provide additional information and accountability on the use of funds provided to districts. Next slide, please. The LCAP supplement requires districts to present information at a regularly scheduled board meeting by February twenty-eighth as it relates to the educational partner engagement on the use of funds, update to the 2021-22 budget overview for parents and guardians, outcome data related to identified LCAP metrics, if available, and implementation of expenditure plan related to actions identified in LCAP. Unfortunately, due to the continued suspension of state assessments in the 2020-21 school year and the delays in state reporting, there are no data metrics to report at this time. All reported data will be shared in June with the comprehensive LCAP presentation. Also, no board approval or adoption of the LCAP supplement is needed tonight. The LCAP supplement will be a part of the comprehensive LCAP that will be presented in June for approval and adoption. Next slide, please. AUSD has and continues to conduct educational partner engagement efforts through thought exchange surveys and board presentation to the community. Especially for grant funds that require community input, we have conducted surveys as well as gathered input from the board and public comments to ensure collaboration. As you can see, inputs were gathered in the month of May of last school year for the Extended Learning Opportunity Grant and Local Control Accountability Plan. And most recently, in October, we gathered input for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Grant, also known as the ESTER III, to develop our expenditure plan. Next slide, please. This chart shows the total general purpose revenue that AUSD expects to receive this school year. The total revenue projected for the district is fifty million, six hundred thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars, of which thirty-three million, four hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars is the local control funding formula. Six million, five hundred seventy thousand, sixty-eight dollars is other state funds. Seven million, nine hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred and two dollars is local funds. And two million, six hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars is federal funds. And two million, six hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars is federal funds. Of the thirty-three million, four hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars in LCFF funds, one million, six hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars is generated based on the enrollment of high need students, which by state definition are our foster youth, English learners, and low income students. And of this entire budget, the district has allocated three million, eight hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars to the actions and services in our LCAP. Next slide, please. We have been able to align the goals of the increased federal funds with the goals of the LCAP in order to ensure the continuity of learning through remote instruction, as well as increased strategies for continuous and safe in-person learning and address the impact of lost instructional time by expanding technology to support student learning, providing online instructional materials, implementing ongoing assessments in the cycle of continuous improvement, creating safe environments, engaging parents and families in decision-making, and improving communications. Next slide, please. The expenditures of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds known as ESTER one and two were focused on ensuring the continuity of remote learning and COVID safety. Seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars were received and expended in the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. Hundred and four thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars were utilized for materials and supplies to provide remote instruction. Two hundred eleven thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars were utilized for additional staff supports to provide special education, mental health services, teachers for COVID leave, and extra classified staff duties. Four hundred thirteen thousand and six hundred and one dollars were utilized to provide PPEs, cleaning supplies, air filters, consultants, test kits, and other supplies to mitigate the spread of COVID. Next slide, please. We received and expended one million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars in the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year in the form of the Learning Loss Mitigation Fund to focus on the continuity of remote learning and COVID safety. We spent six hundred and three thousand, one hundred twenty-three dollars to provide technology for student learning and improved communications for staff, students, and families. We spent five hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars to provide the ongoing additional staff support that has been needed through this COVID environment. And we spent two hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars on materials and supplies to increase COVID safety. Next slide, please. The Extended Learning Opportunity Grant provided the funding to focus on the continuity of remote as well as safe in-person learning. We received nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars last school year. And so far, we have utilized three hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars in addition, in additional staff support costs. And we have budgeted the remaining five hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars for additional program support costs related to summer school, educational technology, and COVID safety in the new school year. Next, next slide, please. Lastly, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, known as the ESTER three, focused on providing continuous and safe in-person learning. We received one million, three hundred eight thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars in the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year to be expended through the end of this school year. Four hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars are being utilized for online instructional materials and communications tools. Four hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and one dollars are being utilized for additional support staff costs. One hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars is being utilized to continue to ensure COVID safety. And two hundred fifty-three thousand, ninety-six dollars have been expended to provide ACC program to our preschool and school age students. Last slide, please. Our next steps are to continue to monitor grant-funded expenditures to ensure alignment with LCAP goals and to develop the local control accountability plan for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year that will be presented in June for board approval. Upon board approval, we will submit the approved plan to ACOE and then post the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three LCAP and on our district website. That concludes this presentation on the LCAP supplement. Thank you so much for your engagement and support.
Thank you for that. Um, could you let us know if there's anything in particular you're looking for from the board? Or is this just an update so that we understand what's happening with the LCAP process right now?
Yes, it is just an update, so you understand what's happening with LCAP.
Great. Um, I just have one question about as you go for, go forward with the developing the plan for next year. You, you referred to the fact that we don't have the same state data that we normally would, but can you talk about whether the assessments that we've been doing or what other kind of data you are going to be using to inform that plan as you begin to work on it?
Yes, we will be utilizing our local assessment, which is the FastBridge assessment. So we'll have, um, last year's data to take a look at, and we will be doing our best to, um, sort of compare or correlate that data with the prior Sback data, which was in eighteen, nineteen school year.
Great, thank you. Vice President Duran.
Um, Dr. Shen, a couple of questions, um, that I have is, uh, one is that, um, you noted that, that, that there's a thought exchange survey. And I'm wondering about how, um, you're gonna address the community that normally doesn't get involved in, in that survey. I mean, if you even know, eh, which groups are not really involved, parent groups? Because I have felt that way, and, and I think, you know, you'd have to look at the data to be sure. But, uh, do you have other ways of reaching, um, other communities that are not so involved in this, in the technology type of responses?
That's a very good question, Vice President Duran, and I'm really hoping that we could take this on in the Student Achievement Committee, um, and that you are, uh, also leading with me. Uh, we know that our next task is to develop a survey for our most underserved and underrepresented students and families. Um, and as we talked about, not only the survey questions, I believe, uh, another critical question we must answer is the process in which how we will administer the survey and how we will target, um, traditional populations that have been unable to participate. Um, and thank you for bringing that back to my attention. I really hope that we could gather your input, the board's input, as well as our Student Achievement Committee input on how to best, uh, reach the, that student and family population. And I've learned a lot from, um, our recent effort with the vaccination outreach. And I really believe perhaps we should utilize that same strategy in which we, uh, ask staff who speak multiple languages to actually reach out, um, by phone or in person, uh, and because I believe it garnered better responses that way. So I hope that is another, um, strategy that we can employ with these surveys as well.
Um, and in addition then to, to the survey that we will be, uh, developing in the achievement, uh, Student Achievement Committee, uh, what about the fact that the, that Achievement Committee is basically responsible for the LCAP development? Is that not correct? And, and how do you, how do you see that rolling out, eh, with such a short time ahead of us?
It's a, you definitely, this, uh, Student Achievement Committee is a large stakeholder group, uh, that should guide the LCAP development. So in the upcoming months, uh, we definitely need to agendize, uh, the components of the LCAP that need to be reviewed, uh, such as some of the budget components, as well as the metrics that are available, should be reviewed within the Student Achievement Committee. I know we've already, um, reviewed some preliminary data, uh, in the Student Achievement Committee, but as we get more data in this second semester, uh, we definitely need to discuss that within that committee.
And, and my last question is basically, um, President Hinckley raised it in terms of what, uh, uh, you know, what student metrics are we using or studies or evaluations? And, and you had mentioned the student assessments, the FastBridge. And I'm also wondering about the Ds and Fs that we were able to, you know, uh, that were presented to the board, if those are gonna be considered as well.
Yeah, I think we, yes, I definitely think we should look at that.
Okay, great. And, and also the, um, are you gonna include the, the, uh, California Healthy Students, uh, Survey? What's it called?
If they are available in time. The data.
Do we have any idea when that's coming in?
Thank you.
Yeah, we do. So we do have old data. We have data from the nineteen twenty administration. Um, we skip a year and then we administer it to, um, everybody in particular grades this year. Um, I believe the middle school was leading the pack and they finished up their healthy kids survey, I think, last week. The elementary schools will be rolling it out next, and I believe our high school has requested, um, in April. We have about two to four weeks after we administer it to get the data back. And so it could be that we get that back before the end of the school year, um, but not quite sure if it meets the cadence for the Student Achievement Committee. But we do anticipate getting our results back before the end of this school year.
Trustee Dos.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, one, the LCAP can be a little confusing, um, and I'm like, I'm on the board now, so now I have a better understanding of what it is and how it applies to my student and things like that. But, um, for the, um, average parent, or maybe even, um, the like overly involved parent, the LCAP can sometimes be a little confusing. So I was wondering if it would be possible to kind of summarize what the LCAP is all about and kind of how it relates to students and then send that out, um, as like, um, you know, like a small, like, um, newsletter or, you know, so that parents kind of understand like, hey, this is what the LCAP is. This is, you know, how it relates to your student, and this is why it should matter to you or why you should pay attention to it. Um, I think that would be super helpful. Um, and then my other question, uh, one, I'd like to know, like, if that's possible and, you know, if you think that's a good idea. And then my other question is around, uh, the LCAP is usually very specific about how the money, about how money is allocated and, and where things should go. Um, have there been any changes to that or any flexibility around that, uh, because of COVID?
Uh, first, uh, with, to your first question, yes, sure. I think that's a great idea to share that type of information with our parent community. I'm more than happy to draft that communication, and I will work with our communications, um, department to get that out widely to our families. Um, secondly, can you say that question one more time? I lost, I lost focus.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Uh, the LCAP, um, is usually very specific in terms of like, you know, the, the money and how it's distributed, um, what it can be spent on, things like that. And I'm wondering if there's been any, uh, flexibility around that, uh, or any changes to that, uh, because of COVID.
Sure, yes. Um, as you heard from the presentation tonight, um, because of COVID, so much of the focus has to be on safety, um, physical safety. Uh, when in prior LCAPs, we would really focus mostly on academic achievement. Um, and again, although the LCAP document continues to focus on academic achievement, we are able to, hmm, I don't want to use the word co-mingle, but supplement, uh, with these additional grant fundings that I just mentioned. So they are supposed to work in collaboration and in alignment with the LCAP plan to ensure that we continue to focus on COVID safety as well as, uh, student learning and achievement. And at the same time, there's always flexibility in any plan. And that is why we want collaboration input from our community, because based on what new inputs come about, we can always make adjustments to our plan.
Did you have any, any other questions? Okay. Any other, okay, any other questions, Ward? Yeah, Vice President Duran.
Sorry, just real quick, um, the mental health piece. As soon as you said the COVID, it's just, yeah, we, there will definitely be a mental health piece, right, in, in the LCAP?
Yes, it's already there, and yes, we should continue to utilize our funding to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any public comment on this, so that, uh, concludes our last agenda item for the evening. We will now take, uh, upcoming agenda items from the board. Our next regular board meeting is March eighth. We do still have a few workshops that are being scheduled that you should get polls about soon, a, a budget workshop, a workshop on Ds and Fs, um, a future workshop on the math department. There's a fourth one that I'm forgetting, but, yeah, go ahead, Vice President Duran.
Okay, um, just a couple of items, um, that, that I actually thought about, uh, at our last meeting, or was it the meeting before? Anyway, one is on ACC and, and.
Oh, that was the fourth workshop, sorry.
Very good, all right, right on time, all right. And, and so the other item that I wanted to bring up is, you know, we kind of, hmm, went through the explanations, et cetera, that there was no space for kindergarten. There was, there weren't not sufficient spaces for kindergarten in our, our last conversation. Um, but I, I wanted to see if we could get a follow-up, uh, report from the staff regarding, from the superintendent regarding the availability of space. Um, so that at some point, we could revisit the kindergarten, uh, space, or, or it's kindergarten, I'm sorry, kindergarten and, and expanding that program or et cetera. So space is definitely one of the, I mean, was, to me, the stumbling block. And, and I would like to see us get something from, from the staff regarding that. Whoa, I was long-winded, sorry.
Trustee Davidson.
I might have, some of mine might have slipped in the middle of that, I'm sorry. Um, but I wanted to follow up on that, the kindergarten one, and maybe not even just space, but just revisiting it to see if there's any other ways we can be creative around what we're offering our K parents. Um, and, oh, I had another one, but it is flown out of my brain at this moment. Um, let me see if it comes back to me.
Trustee Lira.
Um, I wanted to bring up an item that I think, like, um, one of our teachers must have emailed you about or emailed the board about, um, her name is Ms. Hubbard. I believe she emailed about like the, um, the laptops in the, in the photography lab. Um, they're like really outdated and like, I'm a photography student and they're super old. And I know that she's looking for the board to take an action in replacing them and like creating, um, some sort of like, no, I'm not sure if it's a policy, but something that makes sure that like we replace them every like six or seven years. Um, the computers are extremely slow and they like definitely need to be replaced, so if we could approach that and get, and make that happen, that would be fantastic.
Yeah. Sorry, I think Superintendent Wells wanted to answer that one.
Yeah, I, I think that was a, a, a wonderful one. I had a student write me about that a few weeks ago. And just so that, um, and, and it was brought up again at one of our meetings today. Just to give an update is that the issue is about, um, Photoshop compatibility that the students and the teacher need for that class. So we put in an order to have the infrastructure so that, that Photoshop class, that, that, that class can have Photoshop, um, capability with up, um, dated computers that my understanding are in, in route. So hopefully in two or three weeks, um, those will be replaced. Um, and so we're excited about that. That's the update. You got to hear it first, um, before the class, since you brought it up.
Thank you.
Oh, man, I was trying to.
I also asked for this to be put in a Friday update so that we can get details on that.
Yeah, so, so, uh, I, some similar, uh, so, um, Trustee Lira, just to kind of give you an update, because I think, um, it's important for you to have. Um, I actually reached out, um, to that teacher, because I thought that it was important and that every, everybody's voice should be heard and they should feel heard. Uh, and so we had a, a long conversation, uh, today, uh, on the phone, uh, because I thought that, uh, it was important. And, um, shared a lot of, you know, a lot of great information. And I'm glad that Dr. Wells was able to kind of jump in and give us an update, which is great. And then it sounds like President Hinckley. And then it sounds like President Hinckley was also going to ask for a Friday update. And the only reason I'm saying all this is because the one, the one thing I can't say about this board is that we might not agree on every topic, right? We debate and we disagree, and that's why there's five people on the board, because we're not going to always agree, and that's why there's an uneven number. But I will say, and the one thing that we do all agree on all the time is doing what's best for students. And we all read that email, and we all reacted the same way. We approached it the same way. What can we do? What do we need to get done? And I thought that that was worth pointing out. And that's why, like I said, we don't always agree. But I like being on this board because the one thing that we all have in common is that we care about the students. And we care about their education, and we want to make sure that they have all the tools necessary to be successful. And this is a really good example of that. I wanted to revisit a previous kind of conversation that we had and hoping to maybe have it included in the Friday update, Dr. Wells. If maybe you can collaborate with Dr. Biggs to kind of just get a more detailed update in regards to the special education and some of the things that were discussed. I know there were kind of a few things kind of thrown out there. Just kind of bringing it all together into one place and then just updating the board on what we find out.
Are you referring to the discussions tonight about
Right.
masks and so forth? Okay.
Right. And then I had a question around, I know each board member is assigned to different sites. And so I'm wondering, you know, with COVID and everything like that, what the rules and kind of regulations are around that and you know, if, you know, if we need additional what am I trying to say? If we need additional or notice, or if we need, you know, anything like that in order to be able to you know, visit our respective sites or whatnot. So I'm just kind of wanted to get some clarification on that. You know, with all the, you know, regulations and things like that.
Let me try to respond to that. It's a, one is an expectation and spelled out in our governance handbook that we extend a professional courtesy by letting the principal know that we're coming to visit or things that so and the principal can assist in a number of other things that go on at the campus. But most folks, like yourself, have already established regular meetings with the principals. And so you guys pretty much worked that out. But if you're talking about visiting additional campuses outside of your assignment, that would be another kind of approach, just trying to get clarification on the question.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see if, I mean, I understand that, you know, kind of how it's always been. I'm wondering if there's been any changes because of COVID, or if there's any additional steps that we need to take because of that? If it's something that we decide to do.
Can I make one suggestion, which is just, so to be a volunteer on our school sites now, they have a system for providing, for example, evidence of vaccination. I don't know if this is partly what you're getting at, but if you, in addition to our pre-COVID protocols of notifying the principal and so forth, if you're going to be going to a campus, you might go through the step of going through the district's process for being designated as at least a volunteer one so that you can submit that vaccination information. And then you would meet the criteria of any adult who needs to be on campus. I don't know if you're asking something beyond that. Other than complying with the protocols and and showing the same courtesy we would do regardless of COVID. Does that help answer it?
No, that does, that does. I just, yeah, that's why I was asked, so that's great.
It's at least a mechanism for us to provide that information to the district in a formal way. Any other items? All right, we are, there's a hand up. Oh, that's Brian's hand. All right, so we are adjourned. We will have everyone have a great bake. See you Wednesday at 5 o'clock at the middle school courtyard, then have a great bake, then we'll see you March 8th.
All right, see everybody tomorrow.